The Montgomery County Board of Commissioners note the presence of all three commissioners. I'd like to have Bill Caldwell lead us in the pledge.
Let's lead it with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks, Bill. All right. Good morning. First, I want to thank everyone for adjusting your busy schedules to join us today early this week. First of my comments, last week, the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board hosted a special event for members of the tourism and recreation industries in Montgomery County. I know that all three commissioners were there, and it was, they always know how to have a good time. And so we got to meet many of our friends and neighbors that are doing great work to make Montco a destination, a place, you know, for travel and tourism. And so I want to thank the Valley Forge Tourism Board for inviting us to participate. Next week, we are hosting a flag raising ceremony in recognition of Veterans Suicide Prevention Week. This ceremony is in partnership with Pennsylvania State Representative Jill Webster, our Montgomery County Suicide Prevention Task Force's Veteran Subcommittee, and our Office of Veteran Services. We also have several friends from our state delegation who I know are planning to attend. I actually won't be there because my sister-in-law, who passed away serving our country several years ago, will be having a bridge dedicated in her honor in Bucks County. But I will be there in spirit, and I hope that my other commissioners will be there in attendance. So during, we will hear from our Suicide Prevention Task Force later in this meeting as they share more about the Veterans Suicide Prevention Week. So I want to thank you all for coming to present to us today, and I encourage anyone who wishes to join on Monday, September, it will be Monday, September 23rd at 10:00 a.m. outside the courthouse. Saturday, September 21st is World Alzheimer's Day. Alzheimer's is the most common cause of dementia. This day recognizes the experiences of the 7 million Americans living with Alzheimer's. It also raises awareness of the experiences of their family members and loved ones who live and care for them. I had the honor of caring for my mother for over three years. She had a form of dementia, and so I understand that, you know, the personal pain that we went through as a family and the toll that it took on her, both her body and her mind. And, you know, as many know, she passed away in April, but I wanted to make sure to acknowledge this important day because we know many throughout Montgomery County are either suffering with this awful disease and many loved ones that are caring for them. So we hope that in the not-too-distant future, we will have more medical breakthroughs and social safety nets to ensure to support all families affected by this disease. September 15th, October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month. During this month, many Central American countries celebrate their Independence Days. We are able to honor and celebrate the strong and significant history of Hispanic Americans, including their roles in shaping U.S. history since the American Revolution. On Monday, October 7th, the county will be hosting an event with Tony Valdez, CEO of the Children's Crisis Treatment Center. Creating a Culture of Inclusion will take place at noon, Monday, October 7th, at the DeKalb Center formerly known as the Human Services Center in Norristown. For more information, visit our DEI Speaker Series page on our website. And I want to thank you, send a thank you to Donna Richman, our Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer, for leading this program. I think lastly, maybe not lastly, September is also National Recovery Month, where we promote recovery practice and support our country's recovery community. This includes the strong individuals currently in recovery and all the service providers, caregivers, peer specialists, and friends and family members who help make recovery possible in our community. I also want to thank, I want to use this moment to invite all residents of Montgomery County, including those with lived experiences in opioid use disorder, to help inform the county on how we should use the county's opioid settlement funds. This funding came from legal sentiments with opioid manufacturers and distributors after legal action against them for their roles in the national opioid epidemic. Montgomery County is set to receive 3.7 million per year for 18 years. That's right, 3.7 per year for 18 years. Please take our online opioid settlement fund survey available online. Your responses will be incredibly useful in guiding and prioritizing these funds to best support prevention, recovery, and treatment efforts in our community. That wasn't the last thing. So next month, we will be taking these meetings back on the road. I feel like we need a theme song for this, so if anyone has any ideas. What's that song, "On the Road Again"?
There you go, Willie Nelson.
Maybe it's a little bit better than that. Our next board meeting will be Thursday, October 10th at 6:00 p.m. in Montgomery Township. It will be at the Montgomery Township Building on Stump Road in Montgomeryville. We will also have resource tables and information available to attendees, including our Voter Services team and Community Connections from 5:00 to 6:00 before that meeting. So it won't be just us as commissioners on the road, it will be the county on the road. God bless you, Becca. We look forward to welcoming folks in the North Penn area next month. And then lastly, and finally, I'd like to take a moment to welcome our new member, a new member to our Commissioners' Office at the county. Stephanie Tipton is our new Deputy Chief Operating Officer overseeing human relations, assets and infrastructure, IT purchasing, security, and our recovery office. Stephanie has over 18 years of public service experience and comes to the county after serving as Chief Administrative Officer in the city of Philadelphia. So we are excited to have you, Stephanie. Say hi to everyone.
Hi, everybody.
Yeah, welcome. And we know you grew up in Delco, but that's okay.
Sorry.
We all, but we're all Eagles fans, right?
Yeah.
So welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner McEachia for some remarks.
Great, good morning. Thanks, everyone, for being here. As you can see, today is, well, you can't see this immediately, I have some comments to make about the election, as I typically do. Today's Election Day, so Happy Election Day. And I say that very purposely because many people do not know that you can vote in this building on the sixth floor, and please don't all run there right now because Frank will be very mad at me, but you can, in fact, register to vote, you can request a mail-in, and you can submit that mail-in all at once here in one Montgomery Plaza, starting yesterday. So I believe I cast the first ballot in Pennsylvania, which I will tell people for the rest of my life, and it's really an exciting moment because here in the county, we've done a lot of work, the team has done a tremendous amount of work, to get to a place where we can get people their ballots with plenty of time to mail them back, plenty of time to correct any technical issues that may come up with processing their ballot, and we expect ballots to get out in the mail this week. And there's 115,000 people who have already applied for their mail-in ballot, and if you have not already, it's very easy, you can apply today, just go to montcovotes.com. It takes you directly to our county site, you can register, sign up for your mail-in, and also just check and make sure it's going to the right address, so you can do all of that there. And, you know, just to show everyone what we've got, we have a new envelope that has this punch, hole punch on it. Make sure that that's yellow so that you can confirm that you put your ballot in the secrecy envelope. If your ballot is not in the secrecy envelope, it cannot be counted. So we're going to have to contact you, and you're either going to have to come in, we're going to have to find a way to fix it. So that's very important, it's in the secrecy envelope. It's a two-sided ballot, which is what most of our ballots have been in Montgomery County and all of the Coller Counties. And after you put it in the secrecy envelope, you've got to make sure to sign and date it. And if you don't sign and date it, you also will not have your vote counted. So please make sure everyone you know knows that, you have the date that you're submitting it, and your signature. And there's another section, if you need assistance, you can read the instructions there, someone else would sign it. But that's been an issue in the courts, it's still unsettled whether or not you actually are, I'm not going to confuse everyone with the law, just sign and date the ballot. Just do that. So we had a town hall on the 12th, a telephone town hall, the first one we've done this year, and it was really fascinating for me to really get a glimpse into what Voter Services deals with every day. It wasn't just the big policy issues like what the court is dealing with on the elections, but it was also, where's my ballot? And how do I, for example, assist someone with a disability who isn't able to come in, or who needs assistance with their ballot, or if I live in a different state or country, what's the best way for me to receive that ballot? Some, you know, some very individualized questions. And it gives me an appreciation for the work that Voter Services has to do every day when they're essentially tasked with responding to the needs of 600,000 eligible voters. So we will do more town halls. The purpose of that was really to get out the word that you should apply for your mail-in. There's going to be some other moments in this election, like when we open our satellite offices and drop boxes around October 4th, and when we go into the final stretch for the election, where getting the right information out there about how our election process is working and the fact that it is secure and safe is essential. So we're going to continue to do those, and we just had a press conference, the three of us joined District Attorney Kevin Steele yesterday to talk about security in the election, and thankful for the DA as well as the Detective Bureau and all of the partners that we engage with, from public safety to local law enforcement, state and federal as well, he noted. We're going to make sure that everyone is free from harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence, which have not happened often, but have happened too often. And it's important for us to let people know that we're planning and preparing for any incidents like ones that had happened in the past, but that we have the appropriate response with our collective teamwork. So there's a tip line that the DA established, I'm going to just put the number out there, we put it out there yesterday, but it's 610-292-2024, and that's for any threatening, suspicious activity related to the election. As you might have seen, six election officials in different states got suspicious white powder the last couple days, and thankfully, it wasn't, you know, anthrax, but it's clearly meant to intimidate and harass people who are trying to administer the election, so it's unacceptable, and there are many different degrees of issues that could come up below that, whether it's emails or other content on social media that might be actually significant and worth reporting. So please jot down the number and make sure if there's any incidents that you report those. Our comms team is producing a newsletter specifically to provide voters in Montgomery County with accurate information related to this year's election. You might have seen there was a text scam recently, a group was pretending to provide information related to voter registration or telling people they weren't registered in order to fish and get their information. Please do not trust random texts asking for your information. You will get information from us, the Board of Elections, on everything related to the election, including the kind of stuff that I just walked through in terms of our mail-ins, the office hours, the satellite offices, your voter registration, et cetera. So you're going to get updates from us regularly for the next 50 days. Couple other events, I would just note, the bike ride was successful last weekend. Tom, I thought you were going to race me.
I couldn't find you guys.
I know.
I was down there.
You know where you can find us? Because we have 100 miles of trail, is that right, Lee?
Oh, I might have been at the
Or 200 miles of trail?
That's what we've been saying, yeah.
200 miles of trail.
I might have been at the wrong starting point.
I might be off by 100. But what's amazing, and the purpose of the bike ride, I see Matt Edmond from Planning Commission and Scott France joined the ride, and a number of other folks who've been leaders with DVRPC and our regional partners. We're investing 200 million to double the trail, you know, from 200 miles to 400 miles, Matt, I'm looking for the right numbers. But it's extraordinary, and it's actually a national model, so people are talking about it everywhere. And that happened because of the bipartisan infrastructure law that President Biden passed. There's a provision of that called the Carbon Reduction Program, which supports alternative transportation, so that's where we got the funding for that, and, you know, the ride was a way of showing people the areas around Florida that we're going to be able to make much safer and easier to bike around. So that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Devault.
All righty. First off, I think my understanding was Lee actually snuck down before you and got the first ballot, but I got to confirm that.
I know. Secret ballot.
Yeah. So last week, with my fellow commissioners, we met with the school superintendents from around Montgomery County at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. You know, as we've talked about before, before I became a commissioner, and I know before Commissioner Wyand became a commissioner, we were on our respective school boards. Commissioner Wyand was in Norristown, I was in Springford, and that was the first opportunity I got to meet Commissioner Wyand there a few years ago, right? So it was actually fun going back, you know, reminiscing a little bit. I spent 12 years there on the IU board, and I basically had to sit in my old seat, so that was fun, too. But more importantly, it was great to meet with the 22 school superintendents around Montgomery County and all, and listen and talk to about all the things that are going on throughout Montgomery County when it comes to education standpoint. But, you know, the theme was really of that meeting was how the three of us could work closely with all the school superintendents and the IU to continue to be supportive, enhancing whatever they need from an educational standpoint throughout Montgomery County. I think we're all driven to provide the best education possible in Montgomery County, and I think that as three commissioners showing up and meeting with them and, you know, supporting their efforts, I think will go a long way in future endeavors. On September 20th, this Friday, is PLW MIA Remembrance Day. For anyone familiar, this is recognition of American prisoners of war and soldiers who remain missing in action. This Remembrance Day was created largely to honor soldiers who were prisoners of war during the Vietnam War. One of the defining characteristics of the United States military is no man or woman left behind policy. It applies in active war zones and ones that have long since been inactive. The Department of Defense has an entire PLW MIA agency that searches for remains of Americans -- hang on -- killed in action so they can be returned to their families. To this day, they are fighting remains of soldiers who were shot down over Germany during World War II, the Korean War, and Vietnam War. They perform DNA tests and return those military members to their families. So I'd like to recognize our PLW community and commend our nation's commitment to returning all MIA soldiers. So and just one other thing I'd like to add, although I haven't been able to do it in the last two years or so, I've participated in many PLW MIA events, especially you'll see motorcycle rides throughout Montgomery County or the Collers of Philadelphia County, including Philadelphia, and I've always been honored to participate in those events as well. Yesterday, we celebrated Constitution Day with the Daughters of American Revolution here in the courthouse steps. September 17th was 237th year anniversary of the completion of the United States Constitution right here in Philadelphia. Our Constitution is one of the most transformative documents in history. In a world that we have not, we've known little, but tyranny for centuries upon centuries are founding far as charted a new path that gave the people the power. It was an honor to celebrate with the Tower of Minses chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution. Again, I'm not sure if I mentioned, but the three of us were there again, supporting that initiative, and we were happy to present them with the proclamation commending them of their work. Coming up is the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. The Montgomery County Battle of Badges Blood Drive, say that three times quickly, is coming up early in October. This is a bit of fun competition, some of our law enforcement partners do regularly for a good cause. On October 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the District Attorney's Office will host a public blood drive right here at One Montgomery Plaza. And on October 3rd, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., the Coroner's Office will host their public blood drive at the Coroner's Office in Eegoville. When the dust settles, they will compare results and see which office was able to donate more blood. So anyone hearing this who is able to, who is able to encourage, you are encouraged to donate blood on October 2nd or October 3rd. So I already placed my bets on what office is going to win, but I'm not going to tell you. You can choose whether you'd like to support the DA's office or the coroner's office, or do both if you have a little extra blood. So I'm honored this month to recognize our Montco winners, and I, again, I'd like to commend Commissioner Wyand for passing this from each of us each month. So for September, we have a few of our county employees that have been recognized by their peers for going above and beyond their duties. So first off, and I'll just, I'm not sure who is here and not here this morning, but I'll just throw out there, if you are here, please stand. But our first up is Sabrina Cruz, who works in our intake case worker screening with our Office of Children and Youth. Sabrina is a strong team player who always brings her honesty to any situation. She is knowledgeable in mental health, developmental delay, and child welfare fields, an individual invaluable asset to the people she serves. Is Sabrina here? Okay. Then next up is Michaela Landford, is Your Way Home Program Manager for the Office of Housing and Community Development. Michaela has gone above and beyond in training the Community Connections staff and coordinated entry. Michaela presented information clearly and calmly with her guidance and leadership. The program has been up and running successfully for some time now. John Ross, John here? John is a park ranger in our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Department. John is someone his colleagues knew, know that they can always put their trust in. He recently stepped up when our coworker was out handling all documentation, meetings, vehicle maintenance, and outstanding issues to his colleague, so his colleague could, until his colleague could return to work stress-free. So I got to make sure we reach out to John when we're going to be out of the office, and he could pick up our, but, so we want to commend John as well. And then we have Joseph Seltner. Joseph, you here today? There you are. He's our Superior Court Clerk with the Clerk of Courts. Joe is a talent for breaking down complex situations and explaining them clearly, ensuring that nothing is overlooked. His colleagues have complete faith in his ability to get tasks done efficiently, and he is reliable and makes him an invaluable partner. So thank you, John, for everything that you're doing.
Is that Joseph?
Oh, Joseph, sorry. And last but not least, Vivian Reese handles development disabilities, provided relations for our Office of Development Disabilities. Vivian has weathered some difficult challenges in her role and created such a positive impact on the lives of individuals she works with. Anyone who has handled, had the privilege of seeing Vivian in action can see the dedication and passion she puts in her work. So with that, one big round of applause for all our winners this month. Joseph, you want to come up? We'll grab a picture with you.
We don't bite.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Hold my board, sorry.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you have to give a speech.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Good?
Thank you.
All right. So first up, we'll have Health and Human Services Vaccination Season presentation. Dr. Alvin Wang is here, he's the Chief Medical Officer and Regional EMS Medical Director. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for today, and thanks to our Office of Public Health and our OPH nurses for making today's vaccination event possible. So my name is Alvin Wong, I'm an academic emergency physician, I have the honor and privilege of working part-time for the county at the Department of Public Safety, serving as a chief medical officer and regional medical director. And as an EMS physician, can I have the next slide, please? I wanted to just give a quick synopsis really of what is so important about vaccination season. So we associate fall with so many seasonal changes back to school, as a proud parent of two young children, it's back to school for them, but it's also vaccination season, and I think that's one of the important things for us to remember. Why do we need to get vaccinated every year? It's because new strains of viruses are emerging, and the vaccine protections that you got from your vaccine the year before do wane over the passage of time. It does take about two weeks to build the immunity from the vaccine that you receive, so it's important to get your vaccination before the actual peak of the season. Next slide, please. So in the past, we had a lot of differentiation between some of the common respiratory viruses, influenza, RSV, COVID-19, and instead, the CDC has transitioned to really talking about respiratory virus seasons in general. And so symptoms for most, aches, difficulty breathing, fatigue, fever, and so on, can be relatively mild to moderate. However, there are some in a population that do suffer very serious illness from these viruses, including even death, and those are the elderly, the immunocompromised, those with certain medical conditions, and very young children. Next slide, please. So talking about some of these three viruses and where they are, on the graph on the left, you actually see, if you click it one more time, it should animate, it's a, oops, sorry, just if you can go back one slide. It's a map of where we see virus levels throughout the United States, and very predictably, we see this, the trend start to come up from the southeastern part of the United States up towards Pennsylvania. So on the right side of the screen, you see the previous four weeks of maps, and you can see that spread. That's the normal expected activity, but it is peaking just a little bit earlier this year than last year. So one of the more important reasons, get your vaccine for influenza a little bit earlier this year. We certainly say, the new vaccines are out, we certainly say by the end of October, the latest is the best time to get your vaccine. On the next slide, we have just some updates about COVID-19. So in September 2024, new vaccines were released by Pfizer, Moderna, and Novavax. These actually are very protective against the latest variants of COVID-19 that are out there, KP2. And the recommendation now is very streamlined, it's really just to get a single booster for anyone older than six months, but especially so if you're older than 65, immunocompromised, or have certain medical conditions, or a healthcare worker. You can see that actually we are coming off of our summer peak, but if you look at last year's data, that larger peak in the middle of that graph on the bottom shows that we are likely to see somewhat of a peak towards the later winter months, December, January timeframe. So again, we're seeing a couple peaks with COVID every year, and it's important to be updated with your COVID-19 vaccine. Lastly, RSV. So RSV is a disease that causes generally mild symptoms for most, but can be tremendously dangerous to very young and very elderly patients. As an example, last year, there was about 58,000 hospitalizations among children and about 100 to 500 deaths in young children, and 177,000 hospitalizations, 14,000 deaths amongst the elderly. We do have an advantage this year, there are several new vaccines that are out, including one specifically targeting women who are between 32 and 33 weeks of pregnancy. So the recommendation here is if you're between ages of 60 and 74, talk to your primary care doctor, get their individual recommendation for you. If you're over age 75, there's a clear recommendation from the CDC to get that vaccination for maximum protection. All right, so where can we actually do this? Where can we get vaccinated, right? So there's a lot of different resources out there, vaccines.gov, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health runs an immunization vaccination clinic, their webpage is listed as well.
Now, Jennifer, you can come up and present on our Aging Master Plan.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and guests. Again, my name is Jennifer Heisler Barnhart. I'm the Administrator of the Office of Senior Services. Today, I'm here to provide an overview of our four-year plan and the five central goals that will begin this October and run through September of 2028. We're also going to hear from Betty White, who is the Vice Chair of our Advisory Council, and how aging services has impacted her family. I will also discuss an update of our office name. So it's been a busy time for area agencies on aging across Pennsylvania. Our office is one of fifty-two, and we are the third largest in the state. Last fall, our office was asked to engage older adults and aging service professionals in order to plan for the anticipated increase in the older adult population over the next decade. Aging Our Way PA is a state-level strategic plan that was formed as a result, and our local four-year plan is directly connected to that plan. We talked with over two hundred older adults about what is important as we age, and the goals that we're reviewing here today were developed within the guidelines of participant feedback in addition to a framework that was provided by the state and federal oversight bodies on aging. This is, we'll show on this slide. Sorry, go back one slide, please. Thank you. There are over two hundred and fifteen thousand older adults in Montgomery County. The largest number of older adults are between the ages of sixty and sixty-four years old. We anticipate that the largest growth over the next five years to be with the eighty-plus population, and that's at a growth rate of eleven percent. Six percent of our older adults live in poverty. We're seeing an increase in housing insecurity and homelessness. Three hundred and twenty-nine older adults in the last twelve months identified as homeless. Over twenty-one thousand older adults report to speaking a language other than English. Six point seven percent of our older adults are African-American. Five percent are of Asian descent, and over one percent identify as having two or more races. So with that data and framework, our office created five goals. Next slide, please. Our first goal is the expansion of the Older Americans Act services to those with the greatest social and economic need, including those who are at risk of institutionalization, and for those who speak English as a second language. To accomplish this, we'll focus on deepening our relationships with community-based organizations that have similar objectives. Finally, we'll expand resident awareness of supports to age in place to reduce the potential of institutionalization. Next slide, please. Our second goal is in response to the lingering challenges connected to COVID-19. We must continue to focus on rebuilding connectedness and decreasing social isolation. Our office plans on doing this by providing evidence-based education with hands-on supports from our volunteer providers and through technological opportunities. We also look to further, as our friends at the Veteran Crisis Line, to further suicide prevention awareness. Our office will do this by consulting the PA Suicide Prevention Plan to amplify our local older adult subcommittee of the County Suicide Prevention Task Force. And lastly, we'll promote volunteer programs that offer in-person friendly visitors. We'll also look to expand the use of technology through digital literacy programs. Next slide, please. So our third goal focuses on equity, specifically in our meal programs, our housing and transportation supports. We're going to look to grow the shared housing counseling program in hopes of increasing housing security, and this program is a pilot in Pennsylvania. We've been working with our partner, Family Services, since June of 2023 to grow this program. We heard the most feedback about housing and transportation, so we'll also be focused on evaluating our transportation services and assisting the community to gain more reliable and affordable transportation options. Finally, one more thing on that third goal, sorry. We're looking to evaluate and expand the cultural and medically, medical inclusivity of our meal programs, both our home-delivered and congregate meal programs, our vital services, providing nutritional support, and increasing the food security of our older adults. Next slide, please. Our fourth goal involves expanding access to home and community-based services. We plan on accomplishing this by further collaborating with the Aging Services Network. Our office will also host provider meetings to discuss relevant participant issues, along with addressing service challenges. And finally, we're going to encourage wraparound services by increasing our collaboration with other county health and human service offices. Next slide, please. So our fifth and final goal is in regard to caregiver supports. We're going to grow capacity to serve both formal and informal caregivers, strengthening the direct care workforce, and supporting family caregivers' well-being through collaborative planning and programming. We'll do this through our community program development team within our office and resources through our caregiver support program. And before I move to our final topic, I'd like to introduce you guys to Betty White. She is our Vice Chair of our Advisory Council. She's been serving on our Advisory Council for nine years, and her mom received services through our Aging Service Office. Betty?
Good morning, everyone, and I am thankful to be allowed to speak about this. It's a passion of mine. Why are these goals important to the aging community? I would like to
... members to raise awareness and increase outreach to veterans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Any comments or questions?
I'm gonna make a quick comment. I agree with you, one is too many and seventeen a day is, you know, off the charts. And it's something I've talked about for years, even on my time on the school board and all that, even though we're not directly involved, but this has always been... I personally feel that, you know, from a federal government standpoint, and if our contacts in the federal government are watching this meeting, that our... we're failing our veterans, as far as I'm concerned. They've sacrificed so much for this country, and I feel that they deserve much, much more respect and, you know, and services and everything that they truly do need. And I hope that, you know, what we're doing here in Montgomery County, we will continue and try to increase over time. But it really is, I see it more as a federal issue. And I believe that the federal government needs to step up and address and take care of our veterans. I mean, we, not to get political, but we have the ability to spend millions and millions and billions of dollars everywhere, but who we're failing, number one, is our veterans. So I support, commend, everything that you're doing for our veterans. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'd just like to quickly just make a plug for our task force, which meets bi-monthly. Our next meeting is October 8th at 9:30. And again, at this time, we do have a lot of events next week for the Veterans Suicide Prevention Awareness. Commissioner Winder, you mentioned our very first one, which will be the flag raising. And then throughout the week of next week, we will have several other events that will be posted on our website.
Awesome. Great.
Thank you.
For being here and bringing awareness to this important cause. Great. Next up, we have the Aging Master Plan with... Oh, I keep forgetting. Hold on one second. We're gonna do the proclamation. Could you come up for us so we can present the proclamation? Great. Thanks for the reminder. All right. Now Jennifer, you can come up and present on our Aging Master Plan.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, commissioners and guests. Again, my name is Jennifer Heisler Barnhart. I'm the administrator of the Office of Senior Services. Today, I'm here to provide an overview of our four-year plan and the five central goals that will begin this October and run through September of 2028. We're also gonna hear from Betty White, who is the vice chair of our advisory council, and how aging services has impacted her family. I will also discuss an update of our office name. So it's been a busy time for area agencies on aging across Pennsylvania. Our office is one of fifty-two, and we are the third largest in the state. Last fall, our office was asked to engage older adults and aging service professionals in order to plan for the anticipated increase in the older adult population over the next decade. Aging Our Way PA is a state-level strategic plan that was formed as a result, and our local four-year plan is directly connected to that plan. We talked with over two hundred older adults about what is important as we age. And the goals that we're reviewing here today were developed within the guidelines of participant feedback in addition to a framework that was provided by the state and federal oversight bodies on aging. This is, we'll show on this slide. Sorry, go back one slide, please. Thank you. There are over two hundred and fifteen thousand older adults in Montgomery County. The largest number of older adults are between the ages of sixty and sixty-four years old. We anticipate that the largest growth over the next five years to be with the eighty-plus population, and that's at a growth rate of eleven percent. Six percent of our older adults live in poverty. We're seeing an increase in housing insecurity and homelessness. Three hundred and twenty-nine older adults in the last twelve months identified as homeless. Over twenty-one thousand older adults report to speaking a language other than English. Six point seven percent of our older adults are African-American. Five percent are of Asian descent, and over one percent identify as having two or more races. So with that data and framework, our office created five goals. Next slide, please. Our first goal is the expansion of the Older Americans Act services to those with the greatest social and economic need, including those who are at risk of institutionalization and for those who speak English as a second language. To accomplish this, we'll focus on deepening our relationships with community-based organizations that have similar objectives. Finally, we'll expand resident awareness of supports to age-in-place to reduce the potential of institutionalization. Next slide, please. Our second goal is in response to the lingering challenges connected to COVID-19. We must continue to focus on rebuilding connectedness and decreasing social isolation. Our office plans on doing this by providing evidence-based education with hands-on supports from our volunteer providers and through technological opportunities. We also look to further, as our friends at the Veteran Crisis Line, to further suicide prevention awareness. Our office will do this by consulting the PA Suicide Prevention Plan to amplify our local older adult subcommittee of the County Suicide Prevention Task Force. And lastly, we'll promote volunteer programs that offer in-person friendly visitors. We'll also look to expand the use of technology through digital literacy programs. Next slide, please. So our third goal focuses on equity, specifically in our meal programs, our housing and transportation supports. We're gonna look to grow the shared housing counseling program in hopes of increasing housing security. And this program is a pilot in Pennsylvania. We've been working with our partner, Family Services, since June of 2023 to grow this program. We heard the most feedback about housing and transportation. So we'll also be focused on evaluating our transportation services and assisting the community to gain more reliable and affordable transportation options. Finally, one more thing on that third goal, sorry. We're looking to evaluate and expand the cultural and medical inclusivity of our meal programs, both our home-delivered and congregate meal programs, our vital services, providing nutritional support, and increasing the food security of our older adults. Next slide, please. Our fourth goal involves expanding access to home and community-based services. We plan on accomplishing this by further collaborating with the Aging Services Network. Our office will also host provider meetings to discuss relevant participant issues along with addressing service challenges. And finally, we're going to encourage wraparound services by increasing our collaboration with other county health and human service offices. Next slide, please. So our fifth and final goal is in regard to caregiver supports. We're going to grow capacity to serve both formal and informal caregivers, strengthening the direct care workforce, and supporting family caregivers' well-being through collaborative planning and programming. We'll do this through our community program development team within our office and resources through our caregiver support program. And before I move to our final topic, I'd like to introduce you guys to Betty White. She is our vice chair of our advisory council. She's been serving on our advisory council for nine years, and her mom received services through our Aging Service Office. Betty?
Good morning, everyone. And I am thankful to be allowed to speak about this. It's a passion of mine. Why are these goals important to the aging community? I would like to share briefly my personal experience of how aging services helped my family with our mother. Our mother was diagnosed with dementia in 2009. And we... she kept going, having hospital visits. And the one hospital visit, I asked the chargers how we could help, how they could help get some home health services for us, because she lived two miles from me, and everybody else lived in other states. And I had a full-time job in my own family. So they pointed me to Aging Services. And Aging Services set us up with a young lady by the name of Cory, who was our case manager. And some of the things that Cory did for us was she assisted me with completing the paperwork for the waiver program, because my mother raised seven children, and my dad died at a young age. So it was an income base, it was an income issue for her as well. And she lived in Upper Perk Manor apartments. So they provided me with the list of home health care providers, and she followed up with the provider services to see how they were doing. And when I discussed with her that the provider that we had for home health care was not meeting our needs, and that was because of the people that they had coming in, they were not meeting the needs, and if those needs aren't met, that meant more work for me when I got home, and they're getting paid to do it. So she found another service that she recommended. And I felt like when we got that particular health care service, home health service, that we hit the jackpot. And she developed a great relationship with my mom and the rest of my family as well, because from time to time, if she was in the building seeing someone else, she would always pop in to see mom. So I contacted her in October of 2015. And then I informed her that mom was transitioning. And she asked me, could she come over to see her? And I said yes. So she came over that Monday and went in the room, and she spent time with her. And we hugged a tearful goodbye, and my mother died three days later. So after she passed, I sent letters out to everybody, thank you notes out to everybody who participated in our care and helping out. And I received an email from Senator Biggs recommending that I join the advisory council to share my story. So that is why I'm here. And about a year later, after my mom passed, I was in the cardiology's office, and I ran into her cardiologist. And he told me, he wanted me to know that he believed my mom would not have lived as long as she did had she not received the care that we provided to her. My team was my six siblings, the home health care services, the doctors, the nurses, the hospital workers, and last but not least, Montgomery County Aging Services. And so I'm tooting the horn, because that's what I've been doing for the past nine years. And I am, we are eternally grateful for those services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Betty was, is one of our advisory council members that helped us work through and form this four-year plan. So thank you so much for being here with us today. To close out the presentation, here we go, yes. I'd like to briefly talk about an update in our office name. It's going to affect at the same time that the four-year plan will go into effect, which is October 1st. And the reason why is because throughout our plan development, it became clear that changing our office name to the Office of Aging Services would be more easily recognized throughout the county and across the Commonwealth as we talk to other AAA's, in addition to being more inclusive to a growing number of people who are over fifty that are aging into the older adult population. So our office and the people that we serve are looking forward to this change that will take effect October 1st. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer, yeah, sure. Thank you for both for being here. Jennifer, it was great to be with you and the governor when they announced Aging Your Way up in Western Monco, I think it was the Satterton area. And, you know, thank you for sharing your story and representing Montgomery County. Betty, ironically, Betty is my mother's name, and, you know, I can't help but get choked up when I think about hearing your story. And I spent the last three years of my life, you know, I consider myself in the sandwich generation. I have a four-year-old at home, two parents. My dad is eighty-seven. My mom was seventy-seven when she passed away. Both of them were disabled. And just trying to navigate a really complicated system while still, you know, maintaining a household, maintaining a job. And so I certainly understand what you went through with your mother. And had it not been for the twenty-four-seven care team that we had in place and the Office of Senior Services that we could connect with and find resources, my mom would not have lived as long as she did. And I certainly would not have been able to manage, you know, the various aspects of my life. And I just, you know, think about when my mom was transitioning in April at Einstein and the people that were there, because we have a really small family, were the caregivers and the people that had cared for her throughout her illness. So I want to thank you for sharing your story. There are so many caregivers out there that are struggling to figure out how to make it all work. So this plan and the great work that Jennifer, you and your team are doing will really help not only those that are aging, you know, age with dignity, age in place, and not end up at one of these awful senior centers, unfortunately, right? Because it is an exercise of the have and the have-nots. If you don't have the means, you end up having to make some really hard choices about, you know, your care through the end of your life. And so I just wanna, you know, say to fellow caregivers, you know, you're not alone. There's resources out there, and I want to thank you both for your leadership on this plan. And let us know what you need, what more we can be doing to challenge status quo, innovate. I recognize that you have a small team, but the work you're doing to support our, you know, our most precious residents, which are our seniors, let us know. Thank you. Any, anything else?
I think you covered. That was good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there, no, there's none of us. Thank you for... Okay, next up, the National Transportation Demand Management Week. I'd like to invite a few people up to walk us through a presentation. Matt, you were first.
Yes, I would just say a couple of opening remarks, and then I'll send it over to my colleagues, Rob and Jackie. If you guys want to stand up, join me here at the right time. So commissioners, first and foremost, the planning commission and our partners, the TMAs, want to thank you for recognizing TDM Week. Transportation is a ubiquitous part of our daily lives, right? Every time we leave our house, we're using transportation of some sort to get where we want to go. And most of the time, our county residents, they drive most places. That's how society works. But not everyone and not every time. And so TDM, really at its heart, when you simplify it, it's really about managing the demand on our roadways and giving people alternative ways to get around, whether they're going to work, whether they're going to shop, whether they're dropping kids off, whether they're going for a run or a walk, doesn't matter. All that stuff is all part of TDM. And so we are fortunate here in Montgomery County. We have two TMAs. Most counties only have one. We have two. Rob Henry and the Greer Valley Forge TMA, or GVF Transportation as they're known. They serve the Skooka River Corridor. So we say, sort of colloquially, that if you take PA 73, kind of divides the county in half. Rob has the lower half of that along the Skooka River and 422. But then we also have Jackie Baxter-Rollins and the Partnership TMA. And they have the North Penn Area, Eastern Monco, Indian Valley, Upper Perk, basically everything above PA 73. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to them to talk a little bit about what they do and how they operate, because at the end of the day, they connect our businesses, our governments, our small businesses and other organizations all together to try to advance TDM. So guys, Rob, you go first.
Thank you, Matt. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you to Commissioner Winder for serving on our board. Appreciate that. So Matt mentions National TDM Week, so there's events going on all across the country this week, and we're happy to be a part of that, and thank you for the recognition. Give an idea on TDM nationally. So in addition to my role here in Montgomery County with GVF, I chair ACT's Public Policy Committee. So this past year, we worked with Congress to pass as part of the FAA reauthorization bill that every airport in the country will have to think about how people get to and from, whether that's employees, whether that's passengers, visitors. So that's a big step in the country as they're thinking about how people are moving and how they're getting there, and providing options for people, which is the point, so that everyone should be able to get and move where they can freely. Here in Montgomery County, we've been here for thirty-four years operating, and we recently worked with a project with the Partnership TMA and Jackie called Bike More, Drive Less, which was to encourage people to cycle, to provide options for cycling. And we worked with two communities in Montgomery County, Whipan Township and Lower Marion Township. So Lower Marion did a crosswalk and a mainline greenway system. Whipan installed a permanent bike lane, which will allow residents to park to their local community park and also visitors to use. We also just recently completed a mobility hub survey from Montgomery County Community College in Pottstown. And what that's looking at is so the students, the employees, and the residents of the Pottstown community can have access and its recommendations on how to better connect to different hubs, whether that's bike, EV, car, van pool, car pool, so connecting those points. And we work with school districts. So we just work with Springford Area School District and also Upper Dublin School District on their connections, so that, you know, there's a lot of, you hear a lot of different epidemics, and there's the health epidemic with children and obesity, and a lot of kids don't walk to school, a lot of kids don't bike to school, and there's a lot of issues for that, but a big piece of that is the infrastructure and the lack of connectivity. So it's helping to connect those dots in those schools. So we recently did, completed two studies for both those school districts that they're working on. And then we also run shuttles in the county. So we run a Upper Marion Rambler in the King of Prussia area in Upper Marion Township. We do the Concha Hocken cab, which is new this year, here in Concha Hocken. We also do corporate last-mile connections, so GlaxoSmithKline takes their employees to their, from the train center to regional rail to our corporate campus, so that's another aspect. And then this year, we kicked off a few new projects. One is in King of Prussia, there is a park-and-ride that serves for people to carpool, vanpool. It also connects the Chester Valley Trail and the Skooka River Trail. But it's also become the intermodal hub for buses. So you have about six, seven bus operators nationally operating out of this basically parking lot with a little old shelter that's been there for twenty years, no restrooms, nothing there for anybody. And they're dropping people off in any weather, and they could be there for four hours, five hours, six hours till the next connection, or however long. So we're looking at that and trying to enhance that and make sure that all those modes can work together, and that can be an amenity in the county. So that's a new grant we're working on. And then we're also working with two new school districts, Narston Area School District and Lower Marion School District on their MySchool, so to help their middle school students understand how to walk, bike, and to work with parents, as we're all parents, to understand that we can do it. And sometimes there's gaps, but how do we fill in those gaps? So we thank you for your support, TDM Week. I'll turn it over to Jackie.
Thank you, commissioners. Partnership TMA is dedicated to advancing transportation solutions that are accessible, affordable, safe, and sustainable. Our innovative programs and services promote multimodal transportation options like buses, trains, cycling, ride-sharing, and walking. And through advocacy, education, and collaboration, we strive to increase connectivity and improve community health, support business development, reduce carbon emissions, and decrease air pollution. This year, we've made some great strides in advancing transportation solutions and supporting TDM. The Bike More, Drive Less project, as Rob mentioned, has resulted in the investment of new bike infrastructure. Two miles of bike lanes in Upper Gwinnett, strategically chosen as a key corridor to connect to existing bike lanes on Route 73 that leads into the community college. A new bike fix-it station in Lansdale, which is adjacent to the Liberty Bell Trail, to support bikes being maintained and repaired, went away from home. And that's a free, that's a free resource. Also, two miles of new bike lanes are going to be installed within the next two weeks in Hatfield Township on Durstein Road, another strategic location to improve access to the emerging Liberty Bell Trail infrastructure. So these are, these are great recent investments. In collaboration with the County Department of Commerce and the Bucks-Mon Collaborative, we've delivered three workshops this year, with the fourth one scheduled for next week, on the topic of getting around Monco. There is a gap. There is a gap in understanding how to access transportation options safely, and these workshops address that gap to some degree. We've provided the workshop to over ninety-nine people, and next week's event is a sell-out. This year, we've received an unprecedented number of calls and emails through our Transportation Options and Insight Program. And we've had, and the majority of calls have been from seniors who need to know how to access their key destinations. Three hundred and thirty-three calls and emails this year, compared to a hundred and seventy last year. There is, again, a great need for people to understand how to access what options are available to them. This year, we've provided travel training to ninety-six young adults with disabilities in five high schools in the county, so that when they tradition out of high school, they can travel independently and safely and become successful young adults. We've partnered with the county's Office of Public Health and Community Traffic Safety Program to promote bike event, bike safety events in Horsham and Lansdale. And next year, we're planning to collaborate with them at an event of the New Traffic Garden in Hatborough. Finally, I just want to highlight two recent successful new collaborations and partnerships that we've worked on this year with Manor on Main Street in Lansdale and Keystone Opportunity Center in Sauterton. To help their clients access jobs, we have delivered bikes, bike safety resources, and support services to their clients. And they've told us that this has been a game changer for their clients, and it's enabled them to get to work reliably and on time at very low to no cost. Thank you for your time. I invite you to learn more about our work.
Great. You all are doing some amazing work, and Rob, it's always nice to see at the board meetings when you travel to different places. You're always bringing back examples and ideas of communities that are doing it quite, quite well. And so thank you for raising awareness. So we do have a proclamation, but before we bring you all up here, any other comments? Okay, come on up. We're gonna take a picture. All right. Last presentation we have is, thanks, the Recovery Month presentation. So I'd like to invite Regina Higgins from our Office of Drug and Alcohol, who is a certified recovery specialist.
I am definitely not Regina.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, everybody. I am Lynn Moore Singleton. I am the administrator for the Office of Drug and Alcohol. Before Regina does her presentation, just wanted to say thank you to you commissioners. I would definitely like to say thank you to our Dr. Tamara Williams for supporting us and all the work that we do. This is something that is a feel-good month, because we're talking about promoting recovery, but I don't want to negate the fact that August was the month for national overdose awareness. And as we look at our county as a whole, we realize that the messaging still has to get out. Gina's gonna come and talk to you guys about some of the good initiatives that we have this month. But please note that if you see what we're wearing is purple, we ask that you, at some point throughout the month, wear purple to support our Recovery Month as a commissioner office. So thank you, Regina.
Thank you for all you do for the office.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, everyone. My name is Gina Higgins. I'm the Certified Recovery Specialist Coordinator with the Office of Drug and Alcohol. I have the honor of standing up here and talking about some of the amazing initiatives that are going on throughout Montgomery County. This month holds very personal meaning for me. I am someone who lost my dad to an I am someone who lost my dad to an overdose when I was 13 years old in 1999. So growing up without a dad really kind of paved my way, like growing up into my adulthood. My mom has struggled with alcohol for as long as I can remember, and still at times does struggle. I also stand before you as a person in long-term sustained recovery myself, and so thank you all for affording me the opportunity. My struggle with substances started when I was 19 years old, and like most of us who struggle with substances, very quickly progressed. Throughout the next 10 years, I suffered multiple overdoses, seven different overdoses. Thankfully, Narcan was very well distributed, and my life was able to be saved. I am only here today to stand in front of you because someone was able to administer Narcan and saved my life. I have been in seven different inpatient treatment facilities, multiple different outpatient treatment facilities. I faced incarceration on numerous occasions. My addiction eventually led me into the criminal justice system through supervision services, probation, parole. I was involved with Children in Youth Services and eventually was admitted onto drug treatment court. So I stand before you today as a proud and dedicated employee of Montgomery County who just celebrated 10 years of continuous recovery last. So thank you all for having me. So we can go to the next slide, please. National Recovery Month was started in 1989 as a national observance, help, observance held every September to promote and support new evidence-based treatment and recovery practices, the nation's strong and proud recovery community, and the dedication of service providers and communities who make recovery in all its forms possible. The observance reinforces the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health, prevention works, treatment is effective, and we can and do recover.
That's right.
Next slide, please. As Lynn mentioned, we did celebrate International Overdose Awareness Day last month. It is held on August 31st every year, and it is the world's largest annual campaign to end overdose, remembering without stigma those who have died and acknowledge the grief of family and friends who left, who they left behind. In partnership with the Montgomery County Recovery Community Center, Narcan was distributed at local Family Dollar stores in Norristown, where 15 doses of Narcan were distributed, the Pottstown Recovery Learning Center, where 20 boxes were distributed, Main Street in Lansdale, where 11 boxes were administered, and then the Counter Culture Barber Shop in Schwanxville, where eight were distributed to community members throughout those areas. So our office, the Office of Drug and Alcohol, is working with our Overdose Data to Action Grant to implement a stigma reduction campaign. So some of the goals of the campaign will be to increase access to care, empower community members, correcting misinformation, education surrounding substance use, as well as utilizing lived, people with lived experience to show the hope and the message that we can and do recover, contradicting negative attitudes and beliefs, reduce harm to individuals with, who struggle with substance use disorder. So the stigma pledge that we will be implementing is, I understand that the language I use relating to addiction is important. I believe that words matter, and that by using person-first language, I am setting an example to my peers, which can also decrease stigma. I will choose to be mindful of the struggles that the other person is experiencing, acknowledging the bravery it takes for many to seek care. With that patience modeled, I can be an example to my peers of compassionate support for families and communities impacted by substance use. I pledge to treat all people with substance use disorder with dignity and respect, to talk about substance use disorder as a chronic illness as opposed to a moral failing, being a leader in reducing stigma by using person-first language and allowing my compassion to set an example for others and promoting the idea that recovery is possible. Every year in September during National Recovery Month, we partner with our Montgomery County Recovery Community Center to offer Lights of Hope. It is an event that is very important to all of us. It is in remembrance of those that we lost to addiction, as well as honoring and celebrating those who have found recovery along their journey. Some of the amazing events throughout Montgomery County that are happening this month. So this Saturday, the 21st, St. Luke's Pen Foundation is having their annual recovery walk, highlighting that recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. The Pro Act Walk also on this Saturday, 9/21, is at the Navy Yard in Philadelphia. It is celebrating victory over substance use and showcasing the strong and proud recovery community. Then we have our Lights of Hope, which is next Tuesday on the 24th, which is honoring those lost to substance use and celebrating those who have found recovery. Next Thursday, our office in partnership with Public Health and our Overdose Data to Action Grant will have a Montgomery County Overdose Prevention Narcan Kit distribution. It aims to increase, increase community access to naloxone and provide information on Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Services. On the 28th of this month, CrossFit Pottstown Resurgence is holding their Recovery Night, which is going to be an introduction to the resurgence program for those who have transitioned and found recovery. And then we also have, technically outside of Recovery Month, but we have our Regional Overdose Prevention Coalition, the annual conference, which is on October 1st. It will be at the Fire Academy. The theme of the event this year is overdose prevention in Southeast Pennsylvania, what's working and what challenges remain. I just want to say that it is truly an honor to have the opportunity to highlight the history and importance of National Recovery Month, as well as showcasing, showcasing the many events happening throughout Montgomery County this month. As a member of the recovery community and the Office of Drug and Alcohol, I thank you all for your dedication and continued support as our office works diligently to expand and enhance services for Montgomery County residents.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations on a decade in recovery, and we are so proud to have you here as an employee in Montgomery County. And your story gives many hope, right, that, you know, suffering from addiction shouldn't be a blemish and preclude you from, you know, all the possibilities that life has to bring. So I want to thank you for, for, you know, working here and choosing to be here and choosing to be a voice for the recovery community. I want to share publicly a post that I shared last night on my Facebook page in honor of my brother, who is celebrating one year sober, actually today. There was some debate on whether it was yesterday or today, but nonetheless, you know, I was always fearful to share our family's story, especially as I entered into kind of this public service, fear of judgment, fear of, you know, just exposing, you know, our, our family and that our family was not perfect. And, you know, when you sit in positions where decisions are being made, you have a responsibility to be able to relate to people that you're serving and share those personal stories so that others know that they're not alone. So I'm going to share the post that I posted on Facebook last night. My brother couldn't be here today. I asked him to, but he had to work, so we want to keep him focused on that, but I just want to share it publicly. So today, my heart is overflowing as I celebrate my little brother Randy Winder and his incredible achievement of one year sober. His journey through drug addiction has been filled with challenges, incarceration, setbacks, and hard-fought battles, but through it all, Randy has shown an unbelievable strength and resilience that I couldn't be more prouder of. Our mother played such a critical role in his recovery, fighting for him and advocating for his well-being every step of the way. She never gave up on him, and oftentimes, I did. Even in the darkest moments, and her love and support were constant throughout his entire journey up until she died in April. I know she's looking down on Randy today, so proud of the man he's becoming. While I wish he was here to witness this milestone, I feel her spirit with us cheering him on. For anyone who has struggled with addiction, or for those who have watched a loved one go through it, you know how difficult the path can be. Randy's story is a reminder that no matter how hard it gets, there is always hope, and there's always a way forward. So to my brother Randy and to everyone out there still fighting, know that you are not alone. You are loved, you are strong, and your story is far from over. Randy, I am so proud of you. Keep moving forward one day at a time. So thanks for letting me share that, because all that you're talking about has been the last decade of our lives as a family, so I wanted to congratulate him on one year sober.
I just want to, two, couple of things. First, I want to thank you for everything that you're doing and the entire team it's doing for Montgomery County. And two, I also want to congratulate you on your 10 years of success, and we wish you many, many more. It's unfortunate that you would have to even think that when you talked about going into politics, that you would even have to think about, you know, the impacts that may or may not have that, you know, that your family was going through. I think that's, I understand where you're coming from, and from my opinion, it's ridiculous that anybody would even bring that up. So I would always support you on that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Because I just, as you said, no one is perfect, and we all have, we all have our challenges, and when we step into the political world, we're doing it because we care and we want to volunteer, whatever may be our time, but to burden yourself with that decision, it's, so I, like I said, it's unfortunate. And I will say finally is that it was, I remember, I don't remember the exact date and time, but many years ago when I was on the school board, it was a sad day, in my opinion, when we had to bring in Narcan kits into the schools. And that's when I really sat there and said, we're, we're losing this battle. And, and I hope that over time, we could reverse this and start to get ahead of it. So I applaud the, I saw the dates on the Narcan distribution kits, and again, it's unfortunate that that's where we are today, but it's some, it's a necessary evil that we have to have in place for our, for our residents and our, you know, because there's many reasons why people end up in an addiction situation, and I agree that they should not be looked upon, you know, down or negative. We have to really understand what their situation is and why they are where they are, and we need to do what we can do to help them. And again, the Narcan kits is a necessary evil, and so it's something that will have to continue. But again, thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just add, congratulations to you. Incredible, and I hope you feel great about that today. And just to add to Commissioner DeValos' comments as well, you know, I think the reason this is so important is this, people traditionally have not wanted to come forward at all for all the reasons that you've mentioned, whether it's such as politics, but really any sphere. And there are a lot of people who mostly still don't, and who won't talk about it. So I think it's really commendable that you've, you know, made your story told, and I think it inspires, even, you know, when you speak about your brother, I think it inspires other people to, to reimagine the way we treat those who are struggling with addiction, including if you're someone who is, and how you can reach out to others and be part of a community that works towards recovery. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. And just acknowledging Charles Clark from the team as well. So thank you. Great job. All right. Sorry for all the, lots of, oh, we got a proclamation. Thank, thank God he's here. All right, come on up for a proclamation. All right. I know that was a little long section of our, our meeting. It's not typically that way, but there were so many important things happening. So next up, we have public comment. Public comment in this section will be on today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts, and the limit is three minutes. David Morgan? Mr. Morgan.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and I think number 15, but if you look at point in the 15 in the expenditures, which would be the Part B, Count Contract Amendment, Information and Technology Solutions File Digitizing, which relates to the Archives building. And I also want to show us where that is, Page 4, 15. So talks about 10,000 boxes of files, and I know that the Commissioners did build a new building for the Archives, so I would think that with pressing needs, we have that perhaps this could be tabled, 1,568,000, that that could be devoted perhaps to helping with another thing, which has been an amusement lot, is the homeless situation. I am aware that 18 Mount, 18 West Ari Street is a building that's maybe not going to become a public federal office after all, and so I was wondering if money from that, store the boxes, you've got a big building, could put, be put into perhaps renovating this building as winter's approaching, cold blue situations for homeless, and it looks like a diamond in the rough to me. I think it's, a lot of people have these medical bills that mount, they might be out of a job suddenly, and they could really contribute to the work in Norristown workforce. So why not maybe consider that building as a sort of dorm-like building? I think you're trying to find a dormitory-like building. So I'm, I've been, I've been inside it, I know what it looks like, but maybe it's close to that, maybe some more plumbing fixtures. So that, that's a thought. And I noticed also in the spending that was on Page 9, it's Resources for Human Development, this is mental illness apparently helps residential and homeless service, 6 million, which is a pretty high number. So when it's really high numbers, maybe to evaluate, is that being effectively spent 6 million there, the best product for the people who need it? And also coming up down the road from there is Page 11, that says down there, the 1.7 million for an amenability assessment, which I wonder what that could be for $1.7 million in assessment? So perhaps these could be really checked out so that we have our, as a taxpayer, knowing that we had 34% tax increase the last four years and the budget's coming up, perhaps these could be really checked out, that they're effectively keeping our taxes down. I was also concerned looking at the, just to make sure that things are listed right, as I just mentioned, all these items, that in the budget, there's an other category, other expenditures, 15.39 million. So what's the other? Is noted by section?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. That's it? Okay. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 5th, 2024 meeting, minutes at the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKeja. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor? All right. Motion carries. Next up, we have an approval of a local economic revitalization tax exemption for Montgomery Park Senior Living Phase 3 development. And I have to say, Steve, I've been pronouncing your name wrong this whole entire time.
That's okay.
And I'm going to publicly apologize because Lee corrected me, so pronounce it for me.
Steve Forster.
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 I was calling you Forster all this time.
That's all right.
As a saltizziac, I'm very sensitive.
That's how you say it.
So that was, that was a long topic of discussion, so, so I'll get it right going, going forward.
No problem.
All right, let's discuss the LURDA.
Well, good morning, and thank you for that, Commissioner. Before you today for consideration is a resolution designated a vacant lot at 1301 Powell Street here in Norristown as a deteriorated area for the purposes of approving a LURDA tax abatement of the tax increment that will be created by the construction of a 40-unit affordable housing project for our most vulnerable low-income seniors. The project is known as Montgomery Park 3. LURDA- LURDA, the acronym, is, as you mentioned, the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act approved by the Pennsylvania General Assembly in 1977. The act provides for an abatement of a newly created tax increment for up to 10 years in an area that has been designated by the taxing bodies as deteriorated. The applicant before you today is Elon Affordable Housing LLC, a local developer of affordable housing, who previously completed Phases One and Two on the same block. This development is being undertaken by Elon with the assistance of Jefferson Einstein Montgomery Hospital located across the street. And in 2017 and in 2020, the county provided LURDA approval also for Phases One and Two. On July 16th of this year, the municipality of Norristown approved the LURDA for Phase Three. The LURDA approval today would mean the newly created increment will be fully abated in year one, stepping down by 10% each year until the 11th year, when the county will receive the full property tax payment. With us today is Mr. Francis Vargas, the President of Elon, to share further details about this important affordable housing project. Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, Mr. Forster. Good morning, everybody. I'm just gonna, I did a pretty good job of summing up our request and I do appreciate your consideration on this. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the project. I know we're a little short on time. If I go too fast, please ask me some questions and I have some more information if we need some backup on any of these points. So Montgomery Park's a multi-phase development on the site of the former Montgomery Hospital as a collaboration with My Firm and Lawn Affordable Housing and Jefferson Einstein Montgomery Hospital. Phases One and Two are complete, fully occupied, and Phase Three, which we're talking about today, is a 40-unit, four-story building. All units are income and age restricted for low-income seniors 62 and over. Next slide, please. Terms of the project, it's a 15.5 million dollar new construction, four-story building with onsite parking landscaping located in the heart of Norristown. For anyone familiar with Phases One and Two, it's designed to mimic the first two phases. Forty-one bedroom units affordable to seniors ages 62 and over at 20, 50, and 60% of area median income. Residents will benefit from social services to be provided onsite, and the approximately 38,000 square foot building will be designed and constructed using zero-energy-ready, Energy Star, and Enterprise Green communities criteria. All three phases have an enhanced environmental and green building aspect to them, which has an effect of reducing overall carbon footprint, but more importantly for the tenants, reduces their utility bills probably by, you know, 30 to 50% per month. There will be a community room with kitchenette, onsite laundry, and management office designated outdoor open space and supportive service program space. For 10 years, project has had widespread community support from local, regional stakeholders and maintains an active waiting list of applicants. Next slide, please. You'll see for those who don't know, we're fronted on Powell Street. The lot that we're looking to develop is the green area up to the right of that, right at Fornance and that corner. That lot will be subdivided into two, and at the bottom right, you'll see a, a site plan for the lot. So there is parking for the building, sufficient open space, and a small designated rec space on the top right of that site. In terms of economic impact and leveraging of resources, we've been doing this for a little over 10 years and have been working on this in multiple phases. So for the demolition of the old hospital, which was 365,000 square feet, we were able to secure $500,000 in RACP funding from Pennsylvania, 3.1 million from Einstein as a contribution towards demolition and remediation, as well as $350,000 from our affiliated entity towards demo and remediation. In Phases One and Two combined, we raised $24 million of private equity through the issuance of the low-income housing tax credits from Bank of America. We were able to get 1.5 million in financing from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. And Montgomery County financed both phases for a total of $900,000, and total developer fee contribution was $1 million. For this phase, Phase Three, we're budgeting 12.5 million of private equity of low-income housing tax credit investment, 1.5 from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, Montgomery County's financing totaling 1 million, and our developer fee contribution is $400,000. The LURDA will leverage in an additional $310,000 in tax revenue over 10 years. And I want to call that out and we can get to the next slide because the LURDA, if we are able to build it, as Steve had mentioned, is a sliding scale benefit. So you have about $50,000 of revenue coming in if it stays as vacant land over 10 years. If we were to build this and build the 40 units of housing, you'll have somewhere around 360,000 based on our projections with the benefit of the LURDA coming to county, school district, and Norristown as well. And we can do the next slide if that's possible. So thank you very much. I know I went through it quickly, but happy to answer any, any questions.
Okay. I'll get a motion on the table and then any board comment? I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number One as described by Mr. Francis Vargas. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. One is you mentioned a million dollars financing from Montgomery County. Could you explain that?
Yes, on Phase Three, we have two, we have a, what used to be the BHDD program, we have a Health and Development Disabilities Program where we set aside, in this case, four units, three at 20%, one at 50%, that we will get referrals from the county for folks that are in their BHDD system. And we've had the same source of financing on Phases One and Two, and, you know, the referral process has actually worked very well. It's a way to integrate people that have, you know, mental health concerns or formerly homeless into, into the facility. The other $500,000 is affordable housing trust fund funds coming from the county.
Right. So it's my understanding Norristown School District did not give the LURDA?
No, but we are in continued discussions with them and as of...
That's, they did not give the LURDA, right?
Yes, they voted, yeah.
Right. So, so you're already receiving taxpayer funded money for this project. What happens if we don't give the LURDA to you?
Well, it has, so one of the nuances on this project, because it is income restricted and, you know, I don't want to get too minute details, our income stream of the project over a 15 or 10-year period is limited by the incomes of the folks. So in year one, we commit to making these affordable to folks at 20, 50, and 60% of income. So whatever that number is, you know, $320,000 in revenue, we can increase that by two year, 2% every year. Our expenses are projected to go up between 3 and 5% every year. So we have a diminishing rate of return, and by year 15, we are basically down 2-0 if everything goes perfectly right. We have a 40-year commitment to make sure these stay affordable to low-income folk, to low-income seniors. So one of the challenges we have and one of the reasons that the LURDA became an opportunity, when we discussed this opportunity 10 years ago, was it helps facilitate that cash flow imbalance. So we're able to take some of the revenue and the benefit of the LURDA, particularly year one and year five, and apply it to year 10 and year 15 to try to balance out the budget.
Right. So, but the majority of the tax burden is going to be school district-driven, so what the county giving in the LURDA is really not going to impact your cash flow all that much?
No, but it is a piece of the puzzle. So, you know, we...
Right, but it's not going to impact your cash flow all that much.
Yeah. And we're not, so to be clear, the cash flow that comes out of it, again, a good portion of that will go straight into a reserve to carry the tax bills after year 15.
I understand that, but it's not, it's not a, it's not a very large number.
No, no.
Right. Okay.
Okay, actually, if you want, I can probably pull it out.
I know the number, so I just wanted to get it on the record.
So I just wanted to comment before we go to a vote. You know, we've made a commitment as Montgomery County to continue to bring more affordable housing units online. LURDAs are ways to get developers, you know, like yours, to come in and complete those, those projects. And so because of that, I mean, I sat on the Norristown School Board before with, I think it was the Phase Two, where you received the LURDA. And, you know, I want to see this project be completed. So us voting while it's a small share of the pie shows our, our continued commitment to getting more affordable housing units. Or my, my continued commitment. So I can't speak for the others. Any other comments?
I support affordable housing.
All right. So moving on to a vote, all in favor? Aye?
No. No, because I would have preferred Norristown to have made a final decision before this came in front of us. Not that I support affordable housing, but the process, my, the way I like to see the process done is that it goes to Nor, the Norristown needed to make a final decision one way or the other before it came in front of us.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your consideration. Any questions? Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a TEFFRA approval for Ursinus College.
We're busy in commerce. It's been a good summer. Before you today is a request by Ursinus College, a not-for-profit corporation, for a resolution approving the issuance of a series of tax-exempt revenue bonds totaling up to $42 million to fund various capital improvements to existing facilities, equipment acquisition for their collegeville campus. And of that, 14.97 million will be for those capital improvements and capitalized interest. The remainder is to repay currently outstanding bonds. The series of bonds will be issued by the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority and have already been approved by that authority pursuant to a TEFFRA hearing and resolution dated September 5th, 2024. The hearing was also properly advertised here in Montgomery County. TEFFRA, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, requires approval by the highest elected official in each county where the funds are to be utilized. Approval of this bond issue will benefit residents of Montgomery County by improving the campus and learning environment for the Ursinus students and will enable the Ursinus to continue to grow its enrollment and thus potentially the need for additional faculty and staff. Neither the General Credit nor Taxing Authority of Montgomery County are pledged as security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation. In this transaction, it does not impact the county's balance sheet at all. I therefore request your approval of the resolution as presented by the solicitor applying, approving the issuance of the bonds. And we have our solicitors, Mr. Field and Ms. Calder here to answer any legal questions you may have about the bond issue.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Two as described by Mr. Steve Forster.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeVal. Any board comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, a TEFFRA for the next-generation farmer loan for John and Sally.
Alger.
Alger. Okay. Great.
So this is an opportunity for a resolution approving a project and the issuance of a bond to enable a next-generation farmer to purchase a 70-acre farm in Gilbertsville, Douglas Township, Montgomery County. The farm to be financed is located at 196 Schlegel Road in Gilbertsville. The applicants, John and Sally Alger, will utilize it for beef and poultry farming, raising row crops, and pumpkins. Total project cost is $1 million. The loan amount is 487,500. And the farm will employ two new part-time employees. The bond is to be issued by the Central and Western Chester County Industrial Development Authority, which for the purposes of my request today, I will refer to simply as the IDA. The bond issued was properly advertised in the Times Herald on August 14th, which was seven days in advance of the TEFFRA hearing, which took place on the 21st of August in Chester County, and was approved by the IDA with no public comment. The IDA is issuing this bond through a program called the Next Generation Farm Loan Program, designed to assist beginning farmers with purchasing and operating family farms, thus preserving the farmland and its products for this and future generations. The authority for this program, we've covered before, is the so-called Aggie Bond Program, established in 1980 by the federal government and authorized in 18 different states, including Pennsylvania. And since the year 2000 in Pennsylvania, it's financed over 230 farm loans totaling over $100 million. And it's designed to permit small balance, low-cost loans to new farmers. They're capped at about $680,000, and funding for them is very efficient to reduce the rates that they pay. Neither Montgomery County nor the IDA issuer take any financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and nothing about it affects the county's balance sheet. In Montgomery County, we benefit through the preservation of the farm being purchased, the new employment and output of the farm. And finally, with the help of Chester County IDA, will we be starting our own next-gen farm loan program here in Montgomery County. I therefore request your approval of this resolution and approving the project and the issuance of the bond, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Three as described by Mr. Steve Forster. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll be perfect next time. So thank you, thank you.
You're up. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, authorization of housing and homelessness initiative funds for the Ardmore House Affordable Housing Development in Lower Marion Township. Welcome, Kaylee Silver, our administrator for Office of Housing and Community Development.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. We also have here with us today Brandon Ford, Assistant Township Manager with Lower Marion Township, as well as Mitie Anderson with Human Good, here to talk about a ARPA project for affordable housing in Ardmore. So a little bit of background, Lower Marion Township was awarded $3 million in ARPA funds out of Montgomery County. Ardmore House is an existing building, affordable housing unit for seniors in Ardmore that already offers 63 affordable senior housing units. Ardmore Two, this project, will be a 48-unit expansion on that site and more affordable rental property for income-qualified senior citizens or persons with disability. We, the township's application to, Human Good application to PHFA was awarded low-income housing tax credits and were really excited, but even with those, even with that Lytech award, there's still a continued gap financing need, which we're here to discuss today. And also of note that, you know, once Ardmore Two House is built, we have requested that four of the new 48 units be set aside for your way home referrals for older adults experiencing homelessness. So when Ardmore House was, Ardmore House Two was initially being designed, it had about a $15 million budget, and then they applied to ARPA, the $3 million ARPA award was given, and the PHFA tax credits were awarded. However, in the year since, the new project cost has increased to about 19.9 million. But really, this is, it's important to note that the original project called for 30 units to attach on to the building as it already exists. This will now be a new building where more units, 48 more units, can be built. So we are here today to request the authorization for an additional $2 million in gap financing so that the project will be fully funded and we can get going on this sooner rather than later. Next slide, please. So for your review today, a decision to approve an additional $2 million in gap financing to make Ardmore House Two a reality and increase the supply of affordable housing opportunities in Montgomery County.
Great.
And I just want to hand it over really quickly to Brandon from Lower Marion.
Thank you, Kaylee. Commissioners, good morning. On behalf of Lower Marion Township and our Board of Commissioners, I just want to express our appreciation for the continued support, not only for the township, but our endeavor to address the affordable housing crisis and the homelessness crisis in our community. And I think the fact that this project is here before you today is a testament to not only the partnership between the county and Lower Marion Township, but also with Lower Marion Township and our nonprofit affordable housing partner, Human Good East, who was also here represented today. So this is not only a partnership between the county and the township, but also with our nonprofit partner. So we appreciate the consideration for the additional funding and the continued support that you've offered us.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Four as described by Ms. Kaylee Silver. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment?
I'll just add, you know, I was in the meeting, obviously, with the state and the local officials and the, you know, township commissioners and everybody who's been involved with this project. And it's just great to see and also understand how important it is to have the municipality step up, to have the county, to have the state and all these credits and have a great partner who can build this. So glad we're able to provide this also in Lower Marion in a place where we, you know, know the housing is astronomical and we want to make sure that there's housing options everywhere in Montgomery County in terms of affordability. So I'm glad we can see this through.
Human Good does a lot of great, great work. So thank you for, for being here. And Lower Marion, thanks for leading the, the charge on bringing more affordable housing units online. So thank you for being here. All right. Moving to a vote, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, authorization of a right-of-way and construction improvement agreement with PennDOT. Matt Edman.
Yes, good morning again, Commissioners. The action before you is being brought by both Plan Commission as well as the Roads and Bridges Department. It is for you to consider entering into a legal agreement with PennDOT to own and maintain a relocated portion of Germantown Pike that will be moved as a part of a major PennDOT project in the lower Providence Township. The legal agreement is called a right-of-way and construction improvement agreement. That is the title at the top of the document. That is the title at the top of the document. That's the title up on the screen, slide. So, just for context, as you know, as Commissioners, Germantown Pike is owned by the county government from Plymouth Township, which is off of that screen, all the way to where it ends at Ridge Pike, just outside Collegeville, which is on that screen. That's the location of PennDOT's project that is the subject of this legal agreement. So, PennDOT is about to advertise construction of the Ridge-Germantown intersection realignment, Phase One Perkyomen Crossing Project. That's a long title, I know. But this is, what you need to know is this is a federally funded $21 million project to improve transportation. It's listed in the tip, and the goal is to relieve congestion in the area around the historic Perkyomen Bridge, which is off to the left side of the screen. Can't really see it very well, but the locals know it very well. It's a bottleneck of sorts. So, actually, if we can just go back one more slide and just hang on that for a minute. So, under the project, which you see here on the screen, an outline, PennDOT will relocate Germantown Pike. They're going to tie it into Ridge Pike about 400 yards to the east of that Y-interception that you can still kind of see off to the left there. They're going to create a roundabout, and that's going to tie in a relocated Germantown Pike, River Road, which is going to reuse the old alignment, or the current alignment, I should say, of Germantown, as well as some local businesses' access points. They're all going to be part of that roundabout. And so, then there's also going to be an extension street that you see at the bottom of the screen. It's going to be built between Ridge Pike and Petron's Mill Road so that the existing neighborhood that lives down off of Petron's Mill Road has safe access out to the roadway system. Next slide. So, this is what is subject to the legal agreement. Because we own Germantown Pike, PennDOT is buying the right-of-way for this relocation, and then they're building it on behalf of the county, and they intend to legally transfer it all to the county when everything is done. So, the area in pink is the portion of Germantown Pike that is the subject of this legal agreement that will be transferred to what Montgomery County will have in its inventory. And then it's also notable that PennDOT is going to assume ownership of the existing piece of Germantown Pike, which is in the upper left there in that gold-yellow color. That extends all the way to River Road. That piece, PennDOT's going to maintain. They're going to take that on, and that's going to become the new extension of River Road. So, therefore, PennDOT has prepared this legal agreement, again, called the Right-of-Way and Construction Improvement Agreement, between them and us, the county, and it needs to be approved and signed by the county commissioners to take effect. So, the county roads and bridges staff, the planning commission staff, and PennDOT have spent several months, the spring and summer, discussing this agreement, negotiating the language of the agreement, and coming to a consensus on what it should say. The final document was reviewed by the solicitor's office, and so all that remains is for the commissioners to approve the resolution, authoring the county to execute it. And so, both Roads and Bridges and the Planning Commissioner bring it to your attention for possible approval today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Five as described by Mr. Matt Edmund. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comments?
Just going to make a quick comment. I know this project's been underway for many, many years, and I'm all for, you know, advancement and all that, but me personally, I won't be signing on to this because of the impact that it had on the local businesses. In fact, one that the PennDOT completely took, put out of business and destroyed their lives immensely, and the minimal money that they receive from the state is ridiculous. And I just, in good conscience, can't just put my name to this.
So, what I would like to say related to this project is, look, I know the business that was affected as a result of this eminent domain, you know, whatever you want to call it, issue. I spent time going there with my family, and so while I certainly understand, you know, the effect that it had on the two business owners and the work that they did to build their business, I also don't want to get in the way of what, you know, PennDOT needs to do here from a transportation and roads perspective. So, but I just want to acknowledge that difficult decision, but a decision that we have to make nonetheless. All right. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Can you tell me about what issues or effect this will have going forward? I think you're talking about what has happened previously, right? And this doesn't...
No, it's already done. Yeah. It's already done.
And I just want to stress for the commissioners and for the public that we can't speak for PennDOT and their decision on engineering, but this was not Montgomery County's project. We did not oversee the design. We did not oversee the project. We are just the ones that happen to own a road that they need to move to make it work.
No, I, and I, I'm glad you pointed that out. I agree that it's not Montgomery County. I just, the business that we're referring to, plus the other businesses that are affected by it, they're not, they weren't, they're impacted, but not like the one business. And like I said, I don't believe that PennDOT acted in best interest of, so I just can't, I'm just saying, I can't put my name to the project.
So, thanks for stopping. Okay. I think I understand where we're at. No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah. One other thing to add is that actually PennDOT has this slated to go out to advertisement in the coming weeks. So, they're getting to the end of their design process, and Commissioner Winder is correct that they have done all the engineering, they've gotten all the right-of-way. At this point, everything that they did or would do is done.
All right. Moving to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Two to one. Okay. Next up, authorization for new money bond issue reimbursement. Dean, you were, you were ready. Ran out of, you had some hype music. Okay. So, can you review this with us?
Yeah, I will. Next slide, please. Good morning. So, as you know, the preliminary planning is underway for new money bond issues. These are general obligation funds. We're planning for Series A and Series B, similar to how our bond issue is structured in 2023. The 24 budget did anticipate that new capital funding would be needed, either to finish out 24 and then carry us into 25. We're still evaluating that and looking at our preliminary needs for the remainder of this year and into next year. However, as I said, we're proposing a Series A that would fund the capital improvement plan projects, and then a Series B that would be specifically for the road and bridge capital projects. The plan is that the sale would be either later this year or possibly may roll into early 2025. It depends on what happens with the market between now and then. PFM, our financial advisor, will be monitoring the market and advising us in that direction. The goal is to be market-ready by November of this year, so we're heading down that path. Next slide, please. As we had last year, Cozen O'Connor will be serving as bond counsel, primarily Suzanne Mays will be in that role, and then PFM will be our financial advisor. Dan Coslove is the managing director that'll be on this particular issue. Next slide, please. So, as I said, we're still sizing the bond issue, and there's more to come on this. You know, we're projecting that for the capital projects that we might need something in the range of 100 to 155 million. But as I said, that'll be more information forthcoming on the sizing of the bond issue. We're thinking that in the Series B, about 15 million will be needed for the ongoing roads and bridge capital projects that are currently in the plan, in the five-year plan. The debt service that will result from these particular bond issues will be primarily funded by the general fund, and that will be beginning in 2025. Next slide, please. So, the resolution in front of you is a reimbursement resolution. It provides a safety net to continue paying for capital expenditures with other funds when the 2023 bond proceeds are depleted. We still do have bond proceeds on hand from 2023, but they will likely be depleted by year-end. So, just to be on the safe side, in case those funds are depleted before we get to market or during that time period, we would have a reimbursement resolution approval that would allow us to reimburse ourselves for expenses that would have to continue to be paid by the capital fund with the new bond proceeds, if it's needed. Federal law requires this official action to be approved by the board prior to the bond issue. The reimbursement resolution in front of you does not obligate the county to issue new money bonds. It's just, as I said, a safety net, and it's a short-term option to keep our contractors paid timely if we do run out of bond proceeds by the end of the year. Next slide, please. So, next steps and some of the target dates, with the approval of the reimbursement resolution today, we will continue to develop our preliminary official statement for the bond offering and structure that we're going to put out to the market. That should happen somewhere mid to late October. We'll be presenting to the board for formal approval of bond ordinance. With the board's approval, that'll provide the financing team the authority to proceed with the bond sale and move ahead. One of the bigger steps in the process is our presentation to Moody's Investor Service for the county's credit rating. As you know, last fall, Moody's did reaffirm our AAA rating, and we're hopeful that will continue this year as well. This will be a competitive bond sale, two series. We're targeting somewhere in the range of December, early January. We will report out to the board, just like we have in the past. Once the sale is complete, we typically time the sale date around the commissioners' meeting, and we'll come out and do a full presentation on the bond sale results, and then we'll close 30 days later after we go to market, and that's when we will receive the bond proceeds. So, it is staff's recommendation that the board approve this reimbursement resolution that's in front of you today.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six as described by Mr. Dean Dorton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comment?
Yeah. Just a quick question and comment. You talked a lot about bonds that we're going to be looking at in the near future. This resolution, reimbursement resolution, is good for how long?
So, I believe that once the reimbursement resolution, I don't have an exact answer, but I'll get it. I think it's probably up to 60 days after the bond issue or somewhere in that time range. I got to find out.
So, I just want to make sure I understand it. It's, when we pass this resolution, we don't have to go to bond within a certain timeframe?
Oh, no.
Right? So, but, but when we go to the bond, we have to have everything in place so that we could start the reimbursement process within 60 days?
Yeah. This would start, this would start the clock for us to, if we were to run out of bond proceeds next week, we could borrow from the general fund reserves and pay bills and still be in the appropriate time.
So, it's very, this is a very important procedural aspect of what we're doing right now and moving forward from a bond perspective.
Yes, for planning on the bond issue, for sure.
Right. But we're not agreeing to any bonds at this point.
No.
No. I know, I just wanted to be clear because you kind of mashed two things together.
Yeah, I know. And, you know, it's funny.
And I just wanted to, you know...
Yeah. No, typically, we would bring forward the bond ordinance and the reimbursement resolution together, but because we're still in the preliminary stages and sizing the bond issue, that the bond ordinance itself will come later.
Right.
But we still want the safety net there.
Yeah. I just wanted to add a little more clarification.
It's a good point.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Moving to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Establishment of tax collector compensation for 2026 through 2029. Maureen Calder.
We haven't seen Maureen in a while.
It's your lucky day.
It is. It is.
Montgomery County has 63 elected tax collectors and four rural municipalities that are responsible for the annual billing and collection of county real estate taxes. Next slide. Tax collectors are elected for four-year terms, and the next election of the tax collectors will be next year, and they will begin their terms in 2026. The local tax collection law provides that any change in compensation for tax collectors must be approved by February 15th, 2025. And the purpose of that timing is to allow candidates who are seeking election as tax collectors to be aware of how much compensation they will be receiving before they pursue the election. The last change to compensation for the county tax collectors was in 2013, and as you can see, the compensation set was $4.80 for the first 500 bills and $4.15 for the balance. The resolution before you seeks to adjust tax collector compensation to align with inflationary increases over the past 11 years and sets a base increase for 2026. Next slide. In calculating the base tax collector compensation, the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers for the region increases for the years 2014 through August of 2024 has been applied to the 2013 compensation rates on a cumulative basis with the addition of 1.75% for the year 2025 to establish the January 1st, 2026 base compensation. In addition, the tax collectors will receive an annual cost of living adjustment, and that will also begin in 2026 on top of the base calculation. And it will be based on the increase, if any, that's given to non-representative employees by the Salary Board each year. And it specifically will be an increase that will be one percentage point less than the increase approved for the non-represented employees and will be effective January 1st. And the last slide shows you the base, next slide, sorry, shows you the actual amount that it will increase to, $6.34, $6.34 for the first 500 and $5.48 for the remaining. And again, we'll see the cost of living increase on top of that, beginning in 2026.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Seven as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBella. Any board comment?
I just want to thank my fellow commissioners that this was kind of something that I was running with over the last couple of months that I wanted to get in place, and I want to thank our solicitor as well because there was a lot of back-and-forth questions as far as how we could do this and proceed forward. So, I think it was a good team effort, and I would appreciate everyone's, including you.
Okay.
But it's something that needed to be put in place since it hasn't been addressed for many, many years, and I think that this is fair and reasonable for our tax collectors because we want to continue to ensure that these is, this is a very important positions, positions in Montgomery County, and we want to make sure that we're getting the best possible candidates to perform this role. So, this is, this is a way that we're fairly compensating our tax collectors. So, again, I want to just thank everyone that was involved.
Yeah. I would just say that the presentation that the tax collectors gave us was very helpful, and they made a compelling case, so we knew we had a few months to make the decision, so.
Yeah. Like, this is just another example of us as a board being on the same page of just doing, doing what's right, and they did make a compelling case, and it was something that Commissioner Mckeja and I heard out on the campaign trail as well. And so, I'm glad we're hopefully able to do this for our tax collectors. So, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, authorization of annual cost of living adjustment to tax collector compensation effective January 1, 2030.
That's correct. And so, while the last resolution was for the next group of tax collectors being elected in 2025 for that set term, this resolution provides for an annual cost of living adjustment for any tax collectors effective January 1, 2030. And again, it will be increased annually, and it will be based on one percentage point less than the increase approved for non-represented employees, if any.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Eight as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBella. Any board comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, personnel list. Catherine Halen, our Chief Human Resource Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners, or good afternoon, I should say.
Good morning, commissioners, or good afternoon, I should say. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated September 17, 2024 with a timestamp of 10:49 p.m. These transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for your consideration.
Great, I'd like to make the motion to approve the September 18, 2024 personal presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, advertisement of bids and RFPs, Montgomery County Exhibit A. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeBello? Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, awards of contract, Montgomery County Exhibit B. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKeja, any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did I get that? Okay. All right, we're good. Next up, general public comment, limits to three minutes. Speakers may comment on matters that are or may be before the Board of Commissioners, and all public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Who do we have first?
Hertz? Hertz, maybe?
Welcome.
Oh, Heinz.
Heinz?
Yes, my writing isn't very good.
That's okay.
I have a soft voice, but I have some strong feelings about some matters. I'm here, not in a personal capacity, but representing the Wingsfield Preservation Associates, a partnership of 60 people, community-minded, who have owned Wingsfield now for 25 years. Wings is 95 years old. You've already received, I'm sure, a brochure that will enlighten you more than I have time for about Wings. But I'm here first. Thank you for the first-ever aviation policy plan issued by the county. Thank you for supporting the Planning Commission. It's a wonderful support, a wonderful report, with one minor exception. There's little mention of the possibility of acquiring these two remaining private airports using the Montgomery County Airport Authority, which exists. It's dormant, but it's there. The question is why should you do that? Is it going to be expensive? Probably not, because most of us will even donate our interest in that field to the authority. The initial cost, if there are any, can be covered by federal grant because they encourage this kind of ownership. We've gone from 11 airports to three in the last 50 years. Only two are viable in Montgomery County. Heritage or Boston Limerick and Wings. Wings has been self-sustaining financially for over 10 years. It would not be a burden. I wonder why Montgomery County has not activated the authority. We have Philadelphia owning, Northeast Philadelphia, General Aviation, Bucks has an authority owning two airports, self-sustaining. Justice County has an authority owning its airport, self-sustaining. Berks owns, through an authority, the Redding Airport. It is the answer to saving the remaining viable airports in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I don't, I don't know enough about this, so we'll, we'll investigate it and.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question, please?
Sure.
Sorry, no. Did you, have you conveyed this to the Planning Commission?
Have I what?
Have you conveyed everything you just told us to the Planning Commission in the past?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Make sure, we'll check in with them.
Yeah, I'd like to get more information. Thank you.
Glad to, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep, thank you.
I'm sorry, delightful lunch.
That's okay. Jim Muller, please.
Jim Malik-Worster, I agree with the comments about the private airports. Makes a lot of sense. Wingsfield is great, the other airports are good, too. I was here at the last election board meeting, and it was more to me initially about the word police. So there were some comments about illegals, illegal aliens, and I think you were chastised for using the word illegal versus documented. So I went to the election law or to the immigration law, which shows that there is no definition in there that deals with undocumented, okay? It's eight USC 1101 definitions. There, there is a definition for an alien and what illegal is, but there's no definition for undocumented. So if we're going to be technically accurate per the immigration law, illegal alien is the term that we should use. So that's just food for thought. I've read a couple articles recently. 597 non-citizens voted in Ohio, and then another 150,000 were registered in Arizona. So we were led to believe that non-citizen voting was rare, almost unheard of. Well, they were actually looking for it in those states, meaning they did an audit in Arizona and came up with the 150,000 illegal aliens or non-US citizens who were registered to vote and/or voted. So my question to you is, what are you doing here to look for non-US citizens, illegal aliens, who may be registered and/or voted? And the last time I raised the question, Mr. McKeja said, well, you're not responsible. It's the state's job. No, state said no, it's your job. So I'd like to know what plan you have in place to make sure that we don't have non-US citizens, illegal aliens, voting in Montgomery County. You also mentioned something about your drop boxes and, you know, you got video on the drop boxes, you added extra drop boxes. My question to you is, what happens at 2:00 in the morning when somebody brings 10 ballots to the box and drops them in? When you have nobody manning the cameras, nobody reviewing the video? What plan is in place to prevent somebody from going at 2:00 in the morning and dropping 10 off at the box? I still haven't heard an answer to that question. And if that's the case, your boxes are not secure, so that you should limit the hours to when they can be secure. So if somebody could tell me what, what that actually is, I'd appreciate it. And then, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Do you want to?
Yeah, I'll just say that no one's dropping 10 ballots in a box at 2:00 a.m. that are ballots that we don't identify with a barcode. So you could drop anything in, in a box, but we're not going to count it unless it's from a verified voter who, who we sent out a ballot that is individually barcoded. So it just doesn't happen. But to your question of what we do is we collect the ballots daily. The sheriffs collect the ballots, and Voter Services goes through them and makes sure that they came, you know, they're the ones that we sent out. And there are people who can be designated agents who drop off more than one ballot. They have the form, there's nothing wrong with that.
At 2:00 in the morning?
Whatever time someone wants to drop off their ballot, they can do that. And people do work nights, people work all hours of the day, as I've learned in the county. And we appreciate them and want to make voting as convenient as possible for everyone. Actually, I don't always have the energy to comment on some of the other pieces of disinformation, but just to put the facts out there, we, we have a voter registration process. We make sure that the people who can vote are 18 by Election Day and US citizens who've, who've been in the state for 30 days.
So I, I gotta make a quick comment because I, I don't like, I don't, I don't like words when we have, when we say it's not happening, it can never happen, it can't happen. So I hope it doesn't happen. I know that I've asked for the drop box is to be livestreamed. It can be done, at least a majority of them can be livestreamed. We've actually had a request from a lawyer that wants to be able to review videos to ensure that the drop boxes are being used correctly. I've talked with Jonathan Marks at the Department of State when I was at the C cap conference, and I've asked that specific question because there are other states that are cleaning their voter rolls that are removing undocumented voters. We're seeing it in the news, it's not disinformation. Some states have been moved, removed 10,000 and plus. I asked the question, can you have, is there a possibility that we can have undocumented individuals registered to vote in Pennsylvania? And his response is, if they use the automated system, we pretty are, we're pretty good at catching that. But if they use the paper process, there are possibilities that they do get through. There is no clear definition, or not definite, it's not the right word. There is no clear understanding of how many, if any, have registered in the state of Pennsylvania because right now there is no real national database to, to bounce off our voter rolls to ensure that everyone that's registered is a US citizen. So there are specific issues across the country. I just can't comment one way or the other on what those issues may or may not be in the state of Pennsylvania. So I, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, thank you for the not disinformation. You know, I object to that characterization.
So I just need to say that the root of many of the claims that are being made came in 2020 when there was an attempt to overturn an election that was unprecedented in American history. And thankfully, due to the courts and judges of both parties, 60 cases were dismissed that made claims like the ones that were just said.
So I got to comment again because we keep saying that, I'm sorry, but the cases were not dismissed on, on evidence, they were dismissed on process. So, and I'm not talking about 2020, I'm talking about the current, because I'm not going back four years. I'm just talking about the current situation that's been in the news where states have, certain states have been going through their voter rolls and cleaning them up.
Okay, so we're going to move on.
Just a, just a final word from the solicitor on the, on the legal issue related to what I raised.
Just to clarify a point and not to invite argument about it, some of the cases in the 2020 cycle were not dismissed on standing, as is commonly said in the press, but were dismissed after a fulsome court review of the allegations in the case. And that includes the case focused on the overall election in Pennsylvania that went to the Third Circuit.
Okay. Well, this board is, and our team are doing everything to ensure that voters can, can vote. Voting is accessible, and so I'm really proud of our team for the work that they're doing. And so we're going to stay focused on delivering on our election. And it's been really great to work as a team to ensure that they have all the tools to be able to do that. So next, next up. Michelle Mallore.
Hi, I'm Michelle Mallor with the township. I'm going to continue this debate. I wanted to get up and say, why have we added four more drop boxes? These drop boxes were originally put in place because of the COVID pandemic. So adding four more drop boxes post-pandemic seems very, no reason for it. Let's see. Thank goodness for the, the PA Supreme Court that overturned the ruling of lower courts saying that we were going to count every single vote ballot that was not dated or misproperly dated. Thank goodness for the PA Supreme Court because, you know, they upheld the standards that every legal document should be properly dated and just date it. So thank goodness for that because the lower courts have been making a mockery of our voting system. 51 days for voting, that, this, this whole convenience thing in America has become so ridiculous. I could buy three days, three full days of voting at a time. There are people who work. 51 days is a voting season, and that's just crazy. And there's, there's no reason for that. The world is like, the world's dumbfounded right now. We've always been a beacon of light for first truth and justice. And right now, the world can see what this is all about. And, and history is not going to look favorably on what's going on in Montgomery County right now. It, yeah, back there. Let's see. Voter identification. Certain demographics are getting really, really tired of being told that they are so incompetent that they can't obtain identification. They have identification. Can we put some prosperity? I'm losing my train of thought. Can we secure our elections again? Governor Shapiro just yesterday was not able to buy alcohol at a gas station because he didn't have his ID. 51-year-old governor of Pennsylvania was denied alcohol at a gas station because he didn't have photo identification. So you know why? Because it's procedure, because everybody has to show photo identification. That cashier has to take the identification, either scan it or punch, you know, the date of birth into the computer for that sale to go through. It's not that hard. If every little mom and pop gas station can do it, look at you laughing at me. This is ridiculous that you're up there laughing at me.
Okay, okay, finish your comment, and then we'll give.
We certainly should be able to have it for our elections to elect the people that are running the United States of America.
Michelle, you. I mean, not that your points aren't valid points, but everything that you brought up, unfortunately, is not, we don't have the ability as commissioners to address the, the length of the election, pre-voting, early voting, whatever you want to call it.
The drop boxes.
Well, the drop boxes are a different, but voter IDs and all that.
The 51-day of drop boxes?
The, the drop boxes aren't, they're only going to be open, they're going to be open beginning of October. But I just want to make sure we're clear that we don't, we, not that I disagree with you, but we don't have the ability. I asked a, a couple of months ago if the county could implement a voter ID, and we can. So, but I, unfortunately, that's where we are today at the, you know, those major issues that you're raising up are.
Who do we go to for voter identification?
The state legislative body has control over making those changes to the laws. Unfortunately, yeah.
The drop boxes and the voting van and.
I mean, it's, you know, that's a whole other conversation.
Do we have procedure for this voting van that they are trying to put into place?
The what?
The voting van?
We haven't even talked about that. We're, we're, we are developing processes of procedures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The board's going to take a quick recess. Give us five minutes and we'll resume the, the meeting. Thanks for your patience. Resume the meeting. Who's up? David Morgan.
Mr. Morgan.
Good afternoon. David Morgan here of Ambler. Talking about an issue that's come up in, in my experience lately is about fathers. Congratulations Commissioner Matisia for being a father recently and the father stepping up and helping young lives. And with the concern I have for the most earliest life, do not be pressuring mothers to have an abortion because this is an abortion of a human being. And so many are missing out on the joy of being a father to children. So to encourage the commissioners to have more resources for fathers, more ways that it can help. And I did find, focus on fathers as a group in Philadelphia, on KYW, there was an interview, and they mentioned that a lot of men don't even know what a father, what it's like to be a father, because they're a father now, but they didn't have a father. And we mentioned somebody who had lost their father early in the meeting. And so they need help there, and often if fathers not be found in the family, gangs is the next step. So I know of a pastor who was becoming a gang member. He, he found that the Lord changed his whole life, and he could forgive his father. And there's a movie about that out now, I don't know if I can promote a movie, but there is a movie about that, The Forge, and that's about a severe father concern. So if we can have that awareness and as commissioners promote helping fathers, I know that Pregnancy Resource Centers can help mothers if the father's not there, it can help with lots of supports that they need, housing, whatever. Then I'm also talking about today about the, the idea of choice, that the unborn are marginalized so much that we think of choice. I think of names like Chuck and Charity, persons, just like we hear human resources, I like to think of persons, personnel. So I think that's part of my, that we have that kinda attitude, maybe we can think of developing more of personal emphasis. And I also think about the discussion about abortion a lot in politics that young people might think, well, mom, if I almost aborted, was, how about me? And they must wonder about their survival. There was a woman who wrote about post aborted survival syndrome, post abortion survivor syndrome, which she was dealing with, and she had written about this article, and it's called, her group's called Even This Way, to help out in that area, to help people be comforted. So I like the commissioners to promote life more with the Pregnancy Resource Centers being on your website, being clear, easily find. Go to websites, really dense, as one person told me lately. And also the attitude that two kids can be easier than one, because I find that playing going on, or two or more. I have four.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Thank you.
Next, Jeanne White.
Jeanne White, Montgomery. On most of the Dropbox locations, even though they are unconstitutional because I could not find them anywhere written in the Pennsylvania election code, I would agree that the location of the drop boxes, except for these two locations that seem to be uncharacteristically out of the normal locations chosen for the other 18 drop boxes, specifically Upper Frederick's Green Lane Park Office and the Royaferd Victory Parking, Park Parking Lot. These would appear to be in a very remote and isolated location with very little foot traffic to provide security to those dropping off ballots while after dark. At the Upper Frederick Green Lane Park Office, there's a sign posted that says there's a $100 fine to anyone who's found in the park after closing hours, and it closes between dark, dawn, and dusk. With the extension to the 24-hour Dropbox operation, and there is no security, is it a safe Dropbox location in your estimation? Aren't there more suitable locations for these two drop boxes, i.e. magistrate district courts, other libraries, other county offices? These pose a security issue to the public, and I do not believe that they are the best location for these two drop boxes. Since you were able to add six drop boxes for this election, you should have the capability to judge the accessibility and the safety of the other drop boxes. Do you have an evaluation of the primary election's Dropbox utilization to determine whether the Upper Frederick Green Lane Park Office and the Royaferd Victory Park Parking Lot justify their location, or could you switch them to another location which has more accessibility and security? Can you give me your justifications for these two remote park sites for Dropbox locations? Why would you want them open after dark due to the remoteness, the isolation, the park close time, and security issues to the public? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Very briefly. The voter services team works very hard to make sure that they have a fair distribution of all the resources, and they made a calculation that showed that the proposed setup of drop boxes took 32% of the county from being within five minutes to 50% of the county, and that was the driving factor in terms of where the placement was. And, you know, I think.
Notice on the window is going to disenfranchise people who think they can put ballots there? I mean, that's, somebody needs to address that side.
Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll talk about that afterwards, but yeah, I'll just tell you that they've certainly put a lot of thought into it, and there will be, you know, there will be additional boxes in, in future years, I'm sure, but go ahead.
This is not a back and forth.
I, to answer, Dropbox and Roersford, I don't think is as vulnerable in what you're referring to, because it's in a large parking lot, well-lit parking lot. The one at Green Lane, I, I've always questioned that one, but originally, we, you know, drop boxes were open 24/7, then it went to eight, eight to eight, now it's, but I think that we need to reevaluate the Dropbox at Green Lane. I don't think it's a secure location for people just to go there in the middle of the night. It's woods and, you know, it's not well lit, and so I think, I understand the reason what, you know, the goal is to have, you know, accessible drop boxes for people driving, but the, the one at Green Lane is, I think we need to, needs to be moved.
Next up for public comment, Sandra Levine.
Sandra Levine, Hattfield Township. I noticed last night on my laptop that the voter services website has made a radical change, and there's a lot of information that's available, and I commend it for that. But two, I'm gonna call them buttons when you access them, especially from a cell phone. And I visit many, as a committee person, I visit many people who are in a trailer park or in apartments, and they don't have laptops. They use their cell phone. And there was a, I'm gonna call it a button, when you went to your website for registration, check your registration and sample ballot. Those two quick buttons do not appear anymore, and it took me a good 15 minutes of going through the website to figure out where the check registration was and how to see the sample ballot, because it wasn't one of those quick buttons to push. They've added other buttons, like where are the satellites and all. I have no problem, but I would like to see those two put back on there. I helped a woman who was 80 years old, who had moved from the trailer park to a nursing home last week, and the old system was in place. And she could, she has vision problems. She was able, on her cell phone, because she has no computer, she was able to quickly see those buttons, she could check and see what she was, and then I told her, when you get your mail-in ballot, because she had to do that now that she was in a nursing home and no longer driving in, in her trailer. This is how you, you look at the sample ballot that's going to come to you. Well, there is no button for a sample ballot. And I would like to challenge the three commissioners. When you go home, please go to the website and try to find sample ballot and check your registration and see how quick and easy it is to do, because before it was one tap or click, and you were there.
Okay.
So I'm trying to be helpful.
No, that's very helpful.
For the website.
Extremely helpful. We will look at the mobile optimization.
Especially with cell phones horrible.
Absolutely. That makes sense.
Next up. On Zoom, Adrian Seltzer.
Adrian, can you hear us?
Yeah, yes. I just had to find the button to unmute. Hello, Adrian Seltzer. I also would like to commend on the improvements to the website for Voter Services. But I might suggest on the landing page for the county, how you have six buttons under there. Like for, I'm not on the site, so I can't. But one of them was about getting grants and money. So I think that one of those should be taken out or they all made smaller. And there'll be one button that takes you directly to Voter Services. So that would be my one suggestion there. Also, I saw parts of the town hall that was fabulous. But I didn't find out about it until the next day because the email that came was three hours before the actual event. I do a newsletter that goes out to about almost 500 people in Lower Marion and Norbert. And I would have loved to have put it in the Sunday newsletter that that was happening. So if we could get, find out about these things a little sooner, that would, that would be wonderful. And a couple of things that people in the audience there might not know. All the Republicans in the PA Assembly voted for Act 77, which start, which gave us, which gave us mail-in ballots. Also, when Voter ID was passed in 2010 or 11, there was a cherry picking of types of ID that people could use. And it made it very difficult to find, to actually get ID. In fact, I had created a flow chart that I used to train people to get ID. It wasn't, it wasn't easy. And now with the new IDs that you need, I forget what they're called, the real ID. It's even more difficult, especially if you're a woman who's been married and divorced and married again. You had the name change or, or anything else with your identification. Another thing, the Trump administration committed, created a commission to investigate undocumented voters. And they found no incidents of that.
No, I mean, people that come here.
Thank you.
Just a quick answer on the first couple of things you said. One, I sent comms an email last night way too late to say we should have a banner on the front page of our site that clicks to voters. So that is happening. Thank you, Megan. And then, yes, we'll absolutely plan further ahead. That was really a test run of what a town hall would look like. And I think we'll probably want to do one around the time or before the satellites and such are opening. So we will try to get that publicized as early as we can.
Next.
Marlene Laska. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Marlene Laska, Upper Providence Township. Rumor has it that Neil is proposing to cure ballots by driving to people's homes and helping them fix whatever is wrong with their ballots. We, the people, think this is a bad idea. Driving ballots around could possibly lose the chain of custody for the ballot. And chain of custody is very important when voting. Chain of custody confirms that ballots are not filtered, added, or adjusted in any way. Also, it is not the county's responsibility to cure a ballot. It is the voter's responsibility upon notification from the county. If the rumor has any validity, we, the people, are hoping not. Then minimally, we must have Tom DiBello or a trusted representative to accompany, to accompany the curing. Thank you.
Why just Tom DiBello? Why can't I come? So thank you for, thank you for your comment.
I'll be very brief. It's not a rumor. It's definitely an idea. And it's not, let me just clarify. The idea which we are pursuing, and we, the commissioners, a majority of the Board of Commissioners, voted to support mobile satellite operations, which is to have the same satellite office offerings that we have and are extending across the county in a mobile space. So that can be used for any number of things, including showing up to events where people want to register to vote or potentially supporting ballot curing or outreach. Now thankfully, we got our ballots out, or sorry, we hopefully, knock on wood, we'll get our ballots out this next few days. And we're going through the final steps there. That's going to give us a lot of time to reach out to people and hopefully make it easier for them to cure their ballots. But it's generally our stance that if someone is registered and eligible to vote, and especially if they already cast a ballot, we're going to make sure that they either have the ballot counted or if there's some reason we can't count it, we're going to let them know so they can correct it.
So I think that, just for clarification, when we're talking curing the ballot, we're not actually curing the ballot that they filled out to vote. What we're talking about is fixing any outer envelope issues. We're not actually opening.
Yeah, and there's no circumstance in which we take people's ballots, quote, "out into the wild" is one of the terms I've heard. So people to cure it can also just cancel and replace. So that is the preferable way to do it.
Right, and as far as there's, I think that we, I'm still waiting to see the process or procedures. Because A, I don't trust the mobile process of who's taking ballots where and who's opening them or who's taking them back. And so I think that we're also entering into some legal issues that we've got to be very careful about, but that's for another time.
Anything else? The last person is Preston Lutwiler. Preston.
Yes, thank you. It sounds like Marlene Laska doesn't want somebody who has gone to the trouble of being legally registered to vote and who has filled out their ballot and may have made some minor mistake in that ballot to be able to vote and have their vote counted. And that's the kind of nonsense that we're up against in this, in this election. I want to, the idea of adding drop boxes at local DJs offices on property owned or rented by Montgomery County makes absolute sense. And I congratulate you for that. The criticism of Victory Park, thank you, Tom DiBello, for pointing out that the Victory Park Dropbox location is well lit. It's within walking distance from many people, including a large townhome development. And it's the Dropbox location that I have used in several previous locations. So the idea of getting rid of that location is ridiculous. History, I think, will show that, and I want to thank the commissioners for everything you're doing to make the 2024 election in Montgomery County secure, free, and fair. I think history will show that that is the way that the, this 2024 election has been conducted. And I think if there is any mockery being conducted here, making a mockery of our election process is being done by the people with their wild accusations and hypotheticals that are attacking the, the election board. Specifically, you know, last election, the last meeting, I talked about an accusation that Mr. Malik had made at the previous meeting about one person who had been caught illegally voting in two states. And the fact is that that person voted legally in Montgomery County and illegally in Florida and was a Republican. And I said, if that information is incorrect, please correct me. And nobody corrected me. So I think that's the reality of what's going on out there. It's not so-called illegal aliens illegally voting. So thank you, thank you for all of your doing, all you're doing. And for, my apologies for having to listen to the nonsense from the other side. That's it.
Thank you. Any other, okay. Any closing commissioner comments?
I have, I have just two comments. One is I've talked about, and I have actually a third comment, because I think we try very hard not to talk about party politics in these meetings. And I don't believe that we should allow party politics to be part of public comment as well. And that goes for both sides. I, if I talked about, I brought this up a few times now about having the ability for watchers to be able to walk around freely at the election, during the election day and the next day where we're canvassing the ballots. I've talked to other counties that do it. I've asked them if they've had any issues. They've said no. So I think that that's something that we could easily implement if we wanted to. Instead of quarantining people that have watch certificates into one section of the room. And I still, I keep putting that out there. I think it can be done. I'm not saying that we have to allow a lot of people, but I think that would go a long way with transparency. And also I've talked about live streaming the drop boxes to ease people's concerns. And I, you know, we have the technology and we can do it. We can easily do it. And we've also been contacted, as you're aware, by an attorney that is interested as well as having that ability. So it's something that I think that we should have further conversation about at our next election board meeting.
So I appreciate your commentary about keeping our party politics out of this, this boardroom. Does someone have to denote that they're a Republican or a Democrat or an independent to know whether, what side they're on in terms of their comments, right? So we have a lot of people that are coming into this boardroom, spreading misinformation, talking about illegal immigrants. And we know what side of the aisle that's coming from. So I would just ask, like, you know, look, let's, let's focus on, you know, county, county business. Let's focus on the bringing about the right information, whether it's voter services or otherwise. But I've had to sit here and listen.
Well, that's why I said both sides.
I know, but, but, but your commentary, you're saying something to me when the last speaker spoke up. I've had to sit and listen to. Yeah, so I just want to, so let's, let's keep, keep on refereeing that, right?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you. That's why I said both sides. I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, okay.
I will just add, not to this debate, but if you are a parent of a college student who is concerned and perhaps not yet used to your child being away from home and therefore calling voter services on their behalf and organizing their registration or mail-in, I want you to know that you cannot do that. And this is a request from the voter services. And please have your child call voter services directly so that they can provide the information about their mail-in ballot and where to get it. Because voter services is not able to give parents the, I guess it's confidential information. Yes, personal information. So yeah, just a public service announcement there. Sorry for different, different topic. But other than that, I would just say, no, in terms of the room, people obviously have a right to use their three minutes to only business that is germane to the county. So that's something that we should think about enforcing. Perhaps, you know, we're, we try to be as flexible as possible with that. But, and, you know, keeping a respectful atmosphere is important.
Great, thanks. All right, upcoming meeting dates. Our next Board of Commissioners meeting is Thursday, October 10th, 6:00 p.m. at the Montgomery Township Administration Building. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the September 18th, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, next up, Salary Board. Any public comment? Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I'd like to invite Catherine Halen up to review the Salary Board list.
Good afternoon, Salary Board members. I'd like to mention I had two items on the agenda, the Salary Board list and the voter pay policy. We are going to delay the voter pay policy until the next Commissioner's Salary Board meeting. So for the Salary Board list, you should have in front of you the final copy of the list. The list consists of new positions, new hires, other transactions, and a listing of employees going off role. It's a four-page document dated September 17th, 2024, with a timestamp of 10:49 a.m. All transactions have been reviewed by management are now presented for your consideration.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 18th, 2024 Salary Board presentation that's given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Okay.
A motion carries. We're going to table number three. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the September 18th, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment?
I'll just add, if we need to have a special meeting for any reason to, to bring back this issue, just given the timelines of the election, encourage that we take that out. We'll be okay.
Yeah, sounds like we're going to be okay. All right, moving to a vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.